... to order for the July 8, 2014 city council meeting. And we do have a packed house, so we will be efficient with this. Madam City Clerk, we will do a roll call.
Thank you. Mayor John Harabedian.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem John Kapoche.
Here.
Council members Rayshel Arizmendi.
Present.
Denise Delmar.
Here.
And Jean Goss.
Here.
And Councilmember Goss will lead us in our pledge of allegiance and our invocation. Please stand.
Please place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Never did it, never done an invocation before, so I thought I would craft a prayer. I'd like you all to bow your heads, please. Dear God, as we gather here tonight to render decisions and service to the common good for this community, we are thankful for and humbled by the blessings of this life we have in Sierra Madre. From the crack of the baseball bats at Hesley Field, to the views of Mount Wilson Trail, from the sound of children playing at Memorial Park, to the parade that rolls by us every July 4th, we see your hand at work. Please guide us tonight in the spirit of goodness and constructiveness. Help us to appreciate our common destiny as citizens. Provide us with guidance so we can understand the complex issues before us. And remind us that doing the right thing is not always easy, but is always necessary. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Goss. Madam City Attorney, a report from closed session, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The council met in closed session with its legal counsel to discuss a matter of anticipated litigation. No action was taken, however, direction was provided to the city attorney. The council also met in closed session to discuss a matter of potentially initiating litigation. Again, no action was taken, but direction was provided. As to the third item of closed session item that was listed on the agenda, the council was unable to get to that matter this evening.
Thank you very much. Any changes to the agenda? Can I get a motion for approval?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Approval of the minutes, please. Any changes?
The city attorney.
The, I've provided Nancy with a number of changes, and I think she has that.
Great, thank you. I provided the city clerk with one small change.
Yeah, I did too.
Okay.
Mine went through the city attorney, over to you.
As did mine. Thank you.
With those changes.
I move that we approve the minutes as modified.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
And Mayor and City Council reports, I will start to my left.
Sorry, Mayor, I was gonna abstain from that just because I wasn't in the meeting.
Abstention. Four, four yeses and one abstention, abstention for Councilmember Arizmendi. Thank you. Mayor and council reports. Councilmember Arizmendi, do you want to start?
I have no report at this time.
Okay. Councilmember Goss.
Just a quick one. I had a blast on the Fourth of July, a just great time, and I saw a lot of other people doing the same thing, and I want to thank the Fourth of July Committee for doing a fine job, and the city staff, again, for doing just a wonderful job.
Agreed. Councilmember Delmar.
I would like to thank the Friends of the Library. We had a wonderful time at the Lizzie Dinner. Got to meet a lot of folks. It was fun to have the chicken ravioli and see the cleaned up Richardson House, so we enjoyed that. And again, thank you to our Fourth of July Committee and the staff who volunteered the day of the parade. It was a lot of fun.
Mayor Pro Tem.
Yeah, just real quick. Yesterday morning, the mayor and I met with our auditors, and just a few things that came from the community about concerns about our finances. We had the opportunity to talk to the auditors and just tell them to take a look into these areas. So the intent is, when we come back, I can then say with assurance that these items were looked at, and hopefully everything is on the up and up. I fully expect it to be. We've had outstanding audits for the past couple of years, but I just want the public to know that we did have the opportunity to do that with the auditors. That invitation was extended to the entire council, by the way, but Mayor and I were the only ones available to do it, so.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. And I would just like to echo my sentiments about the Fourth of July parade. It was great, and so many people came out, and it would have been nice to have been sprayed with some water. It was pretty hot, but, yeah, brown water, brown water, but it was great. our baby son into the world last week, and, thank you. And we named him after the, we named him after the Mayor Pro Tem, John Kapocha Harabedian, so, his name's John, but not Kapocha, in the middle name, but it's great. So, thank you, everyone, and a lot of people have sent their well wishes, so. With that, we will go to public comment for items not on the agenda. Wow.
Okay. I was gonna say, that stays, yeah.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Cameron Thornton, and I'm the immediate past chairman of the Board of Directors of Madre de la Rosa Passionist Retreat Center. I've been to the theater, fiesta grounds, the existing retreat center buildings, and the whole site above will remain untouched and will continue to be used as they are today. Only the lower unused and vacant field will be proposed for reuse. We have engaged in a lengthy decision-making, planning, and selection process to determine a use that we believe will be the least impactful neighbor to the retreat center and also to our residential neighbors. We are currently working with Nurban West, Inc. We chose Nurban West because we believe they can execute our decision in a sensitive and responsible manner. As our program manager, Nurban West professionalism and willingness to listen will help them create a project that we believe, in the long run, will benefit the entire community of Sierra Madre. Nurban's West's intent is to build a small community of new homes, ungated and open to the community, that incorporates trails and will be compatible and complementary to design to the uniqueness that is Sierra Madre. Finally, Nurban West is confident that the new homes can, through advanced design and confrontation, conservation techniques, achieve no net new water use. Nurban West and Madre de la Rosa are committed to engaging with the community and are just beginning our public outreach. Our goal is to hold two small group meetings weekly. I invite all who wish to share their opinions and meet with us in small group settings of five to six citizens to contact me directly. This small group meeting.
To Reed Library Fair. Join us for a fun-filled afternoon of tail-wagging good times. From 1:00 to 5:00, the Pasadena Humane Society will have their cutest pets, I've been told, available for pet adoptions in front of the library. The Friends of the Library Best-Used Book Sale Crew will be selling best-used animal books from 1:00 to 5:00 also. At 2:00 PM, a family musician and variety show will be held with the Ukulele, and at 3:30, children get to read stories to a dog during books and barks. So everyone, please come to the library this Thursday, July 10, from 1:00 to 5:00, for an afternoon of music, finding a favorite animal book, or a new best friend from the Humane Society. Secondly, on March, on Monday, July 14, at 10:00 AM, and Wednesday, July 16, at 7:00 PM, the library will host Eaton Canyon Storytime. Come to the Sierra Madre Library and discover California wildlife through stories and activities. If that is not enough, then visit our website for other events that will be happening in the library this summer at www.cityofsierraadre.com/department/library.
The target allowance is actually more like 50% of what a resident used in the baseline period. That's a pretty onerous reduction to us for, and I don't think it's practical for a lot of people, even conservation-minded people, to go that far over the general idea of 20%. Furthermore, I think this practice is detrimental to the city as well, in terms of tracking how conservation is going. If you recall about a year ago, last summer, the conservation updates were that the citizen had really stepped up and that conservation was going great, and as we got into the fall, then the message was that that had kind of dissolved. And that's exactly what you should expect if you have a constant target amount, and that goes from right about 80% of the baseline in late summer to 120% of the baseline in early fall. In other words, someone could actually use 20% more water than in the baseline year and still be compliant.
I know we discussed it originally when we talked about conservation when we first implemented it, so, thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay. We will move along to the presentation on our water conservation from Director Bruce Inman.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Was a tremendous accomplishment for our water customers. That amounted to a savings of almost 360 acre feet. Every acre foot we save is a tremendous help, not only to the city, but to the aquifer below us. We reduced our citywide daily use by almost an acre foot per day, and we've gotten a number of comments about the amount of water that is used for hydrant flushing, and that is, when you look at it going on, it looks like a tremendous amount of water, but over the course of the last year, that is less than 1% of the total water use. Just for a graphic, the light brown numbers are, the light brown bars are this fiscal year, the darker numbers were June 2012 through 2013, so you can see how the water usage compared over the prior year. And the best news of all, and what I finish with here, is this is a graph taken from our control system on our wells, and these vertical lines indicate the change in depth between when the wells are switched on and when they're off. The upper end of those lines is the static water level, and as you can see, the net increase since October 9, when we started using metropolitan water, is an increase of 46.5 feet in the water level recovery. That's great. It's a tremendous amount of progress, but keep in mind that this is with Sierra Madre's wells shut off and Arcadia's wells shut off, and as soon as Arcadia turns theirs back on, you'll start to see that water level increase start to level out, if not decrease. If you look at the right-hand side, you'll see a spot where that upper line dips down. That is the result of just one weekend of Arcadia pumping their East Raymond Basin wells. So you can see how volatile this is, and how it can be affected very quickly by production from that aquifer. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
One question. In going out to rebid on the water, did we not save some money?
We did. It was, from memory, $100, $50,000.
Re-significant, then.
It was a smart move.
Yes.
Any other questions? If there's no other questions, I'll open this up to public comment. Any public comment on any of the consent agenda items? Sure. Absolutely, you can go ahead to the podium, please.
My name is Howard McKellen at 490 North Sunnyside. I was just wondering about this hydrant flushing. Why couldn't that water be captured in a container and used for other things?
It's a good question.
Talking about saving rainwater.
Right, we can answer that right now, actually. It's been asked before, and the city manager can answer it, or Director Inman, either way, but the short answer is, the amount of manpower, the amount of time and energy and the expense is just extremely high, and the trade-off just doesn't make sense. It costs the city a lot more to capture that water than to actually buy new water.
And there's the, also, addition, in addition to that, the flow that's required to clear the lines of the colored water, the maintain, the flow, the pressure needs to be maintained for a period of time to flush out the mains. If we were to fill up a tanker, we'd have to stop, empty it, bring another one during that period of time. We've lost the pressure that's required to clear the lines. So it's also, we don't have a container big enough that holds enough water fast enough to be able to do that.
That's a good question, it's a question that, yeah.
Just a reminder, too, that north of Grandview, it does get captured into our settling basins anyway, so that water's not lost. It's, the water's lost south of Grandview.
Thank you. And we'll bring it back for any discussion on any of these items before we vote. See none, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And none opposed, that's unanimous. We'll move along to item number two, which is, I'm sure, why everyone is here. Yeah, I know, they might be here for the budget, yeah, that's right, but, Madam City Manager.
Mayor, members of the City Council, the item before you is a public hearing this evening. It is consideration of Resolution 1459, declaring Phase III water conservation pursuant to our municipal code. There's also an urgency ordinance, Section 13.24, I'm reading the wrong, urgency, 1356U, declaring the existence of a water shortage emergency, and then it's ordinance 1357U, establishing an interim moratorium ordinance pursuant to Government Code, Section 65858. It's a long title this evening. What I will do, since this item was discussed at your last council meeting, is very quickly just run through what those three items are. The first item in your agenda packet is Resolution 1458. That resolution implements Phase III water conservation, which essentially means a 30% conservation for all current customers. It also establishes a moratorium on the installation of new potable water services, and does not allow the issuance of will-serv letters for any development projects. If approved, this ordinance is in effect immediately, and it is not time-limited. This ordinance, this resolution would remain in effect as long as the conditions that resulted in the council's decision to approve the ordinance continue the resolution. The resolution requires a simple majority vote to be approved, and it can be rescinded by the council at any time. The urgency ordinance 1356U is a moratorium on the installation of newer additional water service connections pursuant to provisions of the California Water Code, Section 350. This type of moratorium is also not time-limited, as long as the conditions that resulted in the council's decision to implement the ordinance continues. It requires a four-fifths vote to adopt as an urgency ordinance, and this ordinance, similar to the resolution I mentioned a few seconds ago, can be rescinded by formal council action at a later, at any time. Third is ordinance 1357U. This also enacts a moratorium on the issuance of all building permits, or the granting of any discretionary approvals for the construction of new development that would require a new water service connection. This type of moratorium is time-limited pursuant to the government code, and can only be used once for this current stated reason. It requires a four-fifths vote to adopt, and if you recall from the last council meeting, this, the building moratorium option requires initial action this evening. Within 45 days, staff would need to return with an additional staff report, and the council would have the decision at that time whether or not the moratorium should be extended another 10 months and 15 days. To simplify it, it's another year, or for a full two-year period, just simplifies that language. The, I think that summarizes, unless this council has any questions.
Thank you, and I will open up for questions from the council, and also remind the audience and the council that we have Tom Love with us here today, who's the president of the San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District. So, to the extent that we have any questions for Mr. Love, and if you would like to come to the podium and make any comments that you would like to begin with, that'd be great. So, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor Harabedian. I really appreciate the opportunity. I do want to make a few comments, a little bit of background, and then talk about what's going on within the regional water supply, including statewide, what that means for us, what it means for the San Gabriel Valley, and what might be happening in the future. Real quick, for those of you who don't know, the San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District was formed about 50 years ago, a little over 50 years ago, by the vote of the people, and it represents the cities of Alhambra, Monterey Park, about 50% of Azusa, and all of Sierra Madre. The representatives on the board are elected from those communities by division, and the division I represent, its boundaries are contiguous with the city of Sierra Madre. So I only represent the city of Sierra Madre on that board. The purpose of the district was to provide supplemental imported water to those communities. 50 years ago, they recognized someday they may need some supplemental water. They had a couple of options, they could join Metropolitan Water District. Those cities, those four cities elected not to do that, wanted to be more independent, created the Water District. The Water District built a pipeline from San Bernardino, that's the terminus of the state water project, just north of Cal State San Bernardino, built a pipeline from there that runs to Azusa, and you'll notice Azusa is a bit away from Sierra Madre. That pipeline does not deliver directly into water systems, it actually delivers water into the aquifer, the main San Gabriel Basin aquifer, which underlies most of the San Gabriel That water's delivered, it's stored, and later on, when it's needed, it is extracted through wells. More recently, as many people are familiar with, through a great deal of effort, we were able to reach an agreement with Metropolitan Water District for a water exchange. That allowed the connection up on Grandview to provide that water supply through Metropolitan's pipeline to Sierra Madre, but the water itself is exchanged between the San Gabriel District and the Metropolitan Water District, and that's an important point. That ability to get water through that connection has very little to do with the availability of MWD water supplies, because the actual water supply is coming from the San Gabriel District, and I'll explain that a little more in a little bit. For those of you who don't know, I usually don't do this, but just my background, I've been on the water board for 12 years, representing Sierra Madre, also on the main San Gabriel Basin Water Master Board, but as a profession, I've been in the water resource management business for over 30 years, and so it's what I do for a living. I've been involved with numerous public agencies, including agencies who are members of MWD, so I've been doing this a while, and there's a lot going on in the state right now. In addition to the drought, you have the Bay Delta issues, and a discussion of a water bond, statewide water bond, potentially on the ballot, or potentially not on the ballot, this fall. If legislature takes no action, it will be on the ballot at $11 billion. They are trying to reduce that to $6 billion to match the governor's expectations, to improve the reliability of the state water project and the other water sources throughout the Central Valley. Now we'll get to our regional water supply. You know, as you know, Sierra Madre's supply from the Raymond Basin and the tunnels averages approximately 3,000 to 3,100 acre feet annually. That also is about what our annual water use is, unless we can conserve a little more. But within the main San Gabriel Basin adjacent to us here, and that's the basin that Arcadia, Monrovia, Almani, many of the other cities pump from, is very large. It usually yields about 200,000 to 220,000 acre feet per year, but it still needs to be supplemented with imported supply. As of today, that imported supply that is stored, this is in addition to the native groundwater that was already there from our local precipitation, the amount of water stored in the main San Gabriel Basin is 80,000 acre feet. Now that's spread amongst all the cities that pump out of the main San Gabriel Basin. Of that, 18,000 acre feet is held by the San Gabriel District and its member cities, including Sierra Madre, hold 18,000 acre feet in storage as of last week. The other thing about the main San Gabriel Basin is that judgment, it was an adjudicated basin, and the rules were decided ultimately through a judgment through the courts, is it allows for overproduction. So, anyone who has the ability to pump out of the main San Gabriel Basin can overproduce, they can produce more than their shares, they just have to make that up through some source of water in a future year. Now that's advantageous in that, you know, if the imported water supply is limited, pumping out of the main basin can continue, the only caveat is, is the groundwater level goes down, as Sierra Madre's experienced, some of the wells, the water will drop below the level of some of the wells. And so that is, that is something that could happen, but the production is not limited by the judgment. The San Gabriel District's allocation from the state water project is 28,000 acre feet. Historically, because you don't always get a full allocation, this year is one of the lowest years, in fact, if not the lowest year, it's a 5% allocation this year from the state water project, but on average, it's about a 60% allocation. That would amount to about 16,800 acre feet. San Gabriel's average historic demand for all four cities is about 11,000 acre feet. So on average, we get about five, a little more than 5,000 acre feet more than our demand. Now, there has been years in the past when our storage has been fairly full, it's a wet year locally, there's not a lot of use, and we have not delivered our full allocation. That gets put back in what's called a turnback pool, the other state water contractors, MWD and farmers. The other state water contractors, MWD and farmers in the Central Valley, can purchase that water for their own use, and we don't get it. I would say going forward in the future, I'm certainly going to advocate that we are going to deliver one hundred percent of whatever allocation we get to the, to the basin, deliver it to the San Gabriel Valley, even if our storage fills up, and there's a risk we might lose some of the water if the basin gets too full. Just quickly on MWD, I mentioned that their supply of water doesn't, is not that relevant to the ability of Sierra Madre to take delivery of, of San Gabriel water through the Metropolitan Pipeline. But that being said, MWD has about two million acre-feet in storage. That is more water in storage than they've had any time prior to two thousand and eleven. MWD has invested many millions, if not billion, actually billions of dollars in new storage, whether it's through agreements on the Colorado River, the construction of their Diamond Valley Lake, and then through storage agreements with some of the water companies and agencies in the Central Valley to store water in their groundwater. The MWD can take delivery of that when they need it. So, two million acre-feet in storage. In addition, the Colorado River Basin, the upper basin, is this year running about a hundred and twelve percent of normal runoff, so it's looking good. But anyone who's been to Lake Mead knows the reservoirs are fairly low. There's a lot of ground to make up on the Colorado River. Regardless, MWD will be delivering a full Colorado River aqueduct. Now, although the state water project allocation is at five percent, through their exchanges and storage agreements in the Central Valley, MWD will be taking delivery of a greater amount of state water project by extracting that water from some of those storage projects. And the last point is Sierra Madre's annual demand represents point one five percent, not one point five percent, but point one five percent of Met's total, total demand. It is literally the proverbial drop in the bucket. I want to make that point clear, because I know there's, you know, some of the, the reports coming out is that if MWD runs short of supply, they're going to serve their customers, and they're going to shut off Sierra Madre. The point is, is that's based on their water supply, and they may eventually enter some, some more stringent rationing within their customers. But since the supply they're delivering is coming from the San Gabriel District, their available supply in the MWD system will not affect the ability or their willingness, and I've talked to MWD upper management about this, deliver water, continue to deliver water to Sierra Madre. It's up to San Gabriel to make sure that we are able to work out an exchange. And in my conversations with the MWD management, they also indicated that they would consider under that agreement that that exchange can, can be taken care of, is in terms of if, if there is limited water from San Gabriel to make the exchange, that MWD will consider moving forward in a deficit mode until San Gabriel can make that up. And that, that gives us some, some reassurance. In terms of long-term water supply, you know, it, it, long-term, it appears that the available local supplies with periodic supplemental water from the San Gabriel District, the city should be able to maintain a sustainable long-term water supply. As I mentioned, the average supply of the San Gabriel District is typically fifty percent greater than our historical demand. You know, as climate changes, that changes, depends on how long this dry period lasts. There's no guarantee, but historically, we've been able to maintain a supply fifty percent greater than, than the demands within our four cities. Certainly, some of the actions we've taken recently, where Sierra Madre is now able to take delivery directly through the MWD Pipeline, is, is beneficial. And projects that are contemplated in the future, either through a, working out a cooperative arrangement with the city of Arcadia or Sierra Madre, building an independent project, the ability for Sierra Madre to pump water directly out of the main San Gabriel Basin will be better, very beneficial. So, rather than rely on essentially one source of water, the Raymond Basin, plus the tunnels, now there are two, certainly one more source of water available today, which we're using, and in the future, potentially two, an additional source of water to supply water to the city of Sierra Madre. And so, I apologize, I know normally public comment is three minutes, I went a little long. But I wanted to lay that out, put the perspective of what's going on in a regional basis. There has been some criticism of Metropolitan Water District for not imposing mandatory rationing, when other parts of the state are. And the Met General Manager's response to that is referring to the investment of billions of dollars over the last fifteen to twenty years in reliability projects and storage projects and purchasing water in advance. They're comfortable that they can move forward. They are amping up their conservation message. In fact, they've allocated another five million dollars to radio and TV ads within the Southern California area, as well as incentive programs. What San Gabriel District is doing, we're, we're moving forward with adding some additional conservation programs. I, I would, I would like us to move a lot faster with getting those programs rolled out. Six months ago, we rolled out the high-efficiency washing machine rebate. Our staff are working right now on additional rebates for turf grass removal, giveaways for high-efficiency irrigation controllers, and looking around the streets in Sierra Madre. I don't know if that matters, because I see a lot of brown lawns. I don't think people are running their irrigation, which is good. We need to do that. We need to curtail. And we will continue to look at other conservation programs in ways that we can provide water resource and financial benefits to, to our four cities.
Thank you, Director Love. While he's here, questions?
If I could just have a copy of whatever you presented with all the numbers?
Yes.
You could send that to us?
I've given a copy to Nancy.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll email her one as well, so she can distribute it electronically.
Mr. Love, thanks again for coming. Appreciate you taking the time to do this. With regard to the main basin, they, don't they have like, they calculate the safe yield each year based on conditions? So, I imagine that the safe yield now has been decreased significantly. Do you know what percent of average, the current safe yield is?
Yeah, so, I'm, I'm not sure what the percent of average is, but I can give you a historical context to that. And earlier this year, late spring, the, the main San Gabriel Board of Directors, Water Master Board of Directors, established the safe yield at a hundred and fifty thousand acre-feet. That is thirty thousand acre-feet less than they set last year.
Okay.
And there was discussion of setting it at a hundred and forty thousand acre-feet. In perspective, in two thousand and four, the board, and I, I was on the board then, and I was, I abstained, or I didn't abstain, I objected to this motion, they adopted a safe yield of two hundred and forty thousand acre-feet.
Uh-huh.
And
And you objected, why?
Because it was way too high.
Too high.
If you set it too high, the groundwater production goes up.
Yep.
And you start to draw down the basin.
Okay.
Now, I like to say they were really lucky, because if you remember the winter of two thousand and four, two thousand and five, we got a lot of rainfall, and the basin filled right back up. They were fortunate. But I think the Water Master Board is being a much more diligent and conservative over the last several years when they established the safe yield.
Here's why I'm asking the question, because now that the safe yield has been decreased significantly from, you know, it's high, even the, the other three producers that are part of the four cities' water district, they now have to make up the difference between, you know, whatever percentage. They, they pump a certain amount of water at a safe yield, and now that the safe yield's been reduced, they have to make up, if they don't reduce their pumping, they have to make that up with imported water, and now they're drawing down the reserves much faster. Is that correct?
That, that, that's the first statement. They primarily pump from the groundwater basin, and not to complicate matters, there's an Alhambra Exchange Agreement that was done years ago, where they take imported water from MWD in lieu of pumping their wells, but, but that is more complexity than we need to deal with.
Yeah.
Point being is that those four cities that pump out of the main basin, and they also need supplemental water from the San Gabriel District. And so, when I mentioned the eighteen thousand acre-feet, that is held in total between San Gabriel itself and its member cities hold that eighteen thousand acre-feet.
Yes.
Now, and, and as I mentioned, this, only half of the city of Azusa, actually forty percent of the city of Azusa is within the San Gabriel District. The rest is within the upper San Gabriel District or the Three Valleys Municipal Water District, who have their own supplies within that total eighty thousand acre-feet.
Exactly. That, that reserve that you were talking about is for the use of the four cities, including Sierra Madre.
That is correct.
Okay. The, the point I'm trying to get to, though, is that because the safe yield of the basin is lower for our three partners in the district, they have a bigger demand for the imported water or the water that's held in reserve, as you say.
That's correct.
So, again, if the drought continues, have you projected how long it's going to take to draw down those reserves that you hold? And I do understand your point that at that point, if you were in a deficit mode, you could theoretically borrow from the Metropolitan Water District. But how long do you expect our reserves to hold? And I know that's dependent on how much water you're getting from the state water project, but if drought conditions continue the way they are, and you're saying held to, you know, a ten, twenty percent allocation over the next few years, how long will the reserves that you hold last for the member cities, including Sierra Madre?
So, based what, what's currently in reserve, what we're getting this year from the state water project, and with the assumption of it's five to ten percent the next two years, we would have enough supply for slightly more than two years.
Two years.
Slightly more than two years.
Okay. And that's, that's consistent with what you told us before as well, so. Okay, thanks for explaining that.
Thank you.
Question, Mr. Love. I received a letter from Metropolitan Water District, I think the rest of the council did too. It's dated June twenty-fourth. I just got it on Friday. And addressing the drought, I'll, I'll quote, it says, "Lowering demand is vital to maintain adequate supplies and reserve should the drought continue into two thousand and fifteen. Our collective efforts will be essential in the months ahead." So, do you accept that as a good advice for us coming, even though you are our supplier, this is coming from MWD. We're not a customer, but we're involved with them tangentially.
Yeah. And, and just to, to compare the San Gabriel District, which is much, much, much smaller, with MWD, MWD has two years' worth of water stored, two million acre-feet stored. San Gabriel has approximately two, two million, or not two million, two years of water stored. MWD does have the Colorado River supply, the San Gabriel District does not. We rely solely on the state water project. And so, that, that has a slightly different element to it. I think it is, it is clearly prudent that conservation be promoted like we really haven't before. I do want to mention that the conditions in nineteen ninety-one, in terms of the state water project supply and total state water project and Colorado River supply, when MWD did impose, MWD did impose mandatory rationing, the conditions then were not as severe as they are now. But now, MWD is not imposing mandatory yet. But I think we can't pull back from the strong message on the importance of conserving our water supply. I think it's, it's, it's very important that we continue that message and promote that going forward.
Well, I, I think Hello, Mr. Love. Thank you for sharing that presentation and information. I think you may have answered my question, but it, listening to your presentation, you sounded so optimistic. It almost sounded like I was listening to something else and not the situation of drought that we're in today. So, I, maybe you can clarify a little bit. It, it sounds like MWD has a lot of water, there's not question as to, in your opinion and your conversation with the general manager at MWD, there may not be question to an end as to when they may be providing Sierra Madre water. It sounds like there's a lot of reserves. So, again, it sounds so optimistic. It sounded great. It is, in your opinion, are you suggesting that additional conservation efforts may not be necessary? I hear messaging is important, but I'd like to hear your opinion on that.
Yeah. And, and I did not mean to come across that optimistic.
It sounded wonderful.
This, you know, it's the lowest allocation on the state water project. The, the main San Gabriel Basin water levels are near historic lows. And so, it is a critical time for our water supply. I think along with MWD, you know, we, we, it's very important, and we feel very strongly that we continue our efforts, including incentives and, and communication and encouragement to reduce our water consumption. At the same time, we feel it's important that the, the decisions made in the past that allow us to have some water in storage are recognized. And so, it's, yeah, if you understand that, it's a balance of making sure, look, we haven't been sitting on our hands for the last ten years. We've been doing things to improve the reliability. Had those things not been done, we would certainly be in worse conditions than we are. Whether it is a mandatory ordinance or, you know, again, strong encouragement and continuing to move forward on incentives for conservation, you know, it's a fine line. I, I, I think the, I'm a strong believer in voluntary conservation, and I, I, I have described our water ethic in California much like what we used to do with cans, bottles, cans and newspapers, or with seat belts, or with smoking. It is a generational change that through this communication, education, it will take a generation to change the water ethic on how we use water in California. And we're, we've been working on this for twenty years, since I've been involved down in Southern California. And it'll probably take a while longer, but that's, that, I would stress the education and the incentives very strongly.
Thank you, Director Love. One, one quick question, then we'll let you go. Oh, you got one more, too? Is there any thought despite your, and we will probably let the public ask you some questions, too, after we ask some questions to other staff, but, you know, is there, do you think you'll get to the point where you're going to, you know, mandate that the other cities actually institute mandatory conservation measures to get access to that eighteen thousand acre-feet? I mean, for us, it'd be easy. I mean, we've already been doing the twenty percent for, you know, months now, and Azusa just instituted mandatory conservation as well. You know, it seems fair that if Alhambra, Monterey Park wanted any portion of that eighteen thousand, that they too would have to conserve before they could dip into it. And is there any thought as to, as to doing that?
There has not been any discussion amongst the board of doing something like that. It's an intriguing concept. One of the, the ideas that had, we have floated is that we start to look at an allocation of whatever water supply we have on the basis of historic use and assess valuation. Since we use property taxes to subsidize costs of water, let's look at that, see who's used the most water over, over recent years. Over the last ten years, primarily Monterey Park and Alhambra, and some in Azusa, they have used a significant amount of San Gabriel water, when it was plentiful. They, they, they did use a lot, and that was a financial benefit to those cities. And so, you know, looking at that historic use and go forward, and looking at some means to allocate that water, is something that we've started to discuss, but we haven't moved far, far on that, or even reached the point of discussing basing it on which of our cities are, are doing the most towards conservation.
To the extent you need any help from the member cities lobbying, the other directors on that, we are more than willing to help, and it's probably something we'll do. But thank you very much for coming, and we'll open questions to the city manager, the director in man from the council before we open up to public comment. But any questions on the, oh, you do have one more, sorry. Yeah.
Mr. Love, when do you expect to finally approve a program for turf removal rebates? I mean, again, I've said it before, I'm going to just keep harping on this, but, you know, outdoor irrigation is consuming fifty to seventy-five percent of all the urban water use, and lawns are the biggest user of that percentage. And I, I regret that I was not able to convince our last council that we needed to do that here internally. So, I, since then, a lot of residents have asked me about that, why don't you do that? And I told them our water district is working on it. So, when do you expect to be able to do that?
That's a good question. I think the last time I talked to you about that, I, I, I likely suggested we would try and get that done by May or June. It has not been implemented yet, as our staff have gone through and gathering information, how do we administer that kind of program? But they did find they can piggyback on sister agencies' program. And so, you know, again, being optimistic, as I usually am, I would hope by September we can bring additional conservation incentive programs to the board for approval.
Okay. Can I just say one thing? I just want to clarify that you're part of our water district, that we act, that Sierra Madre has its own water supply and water district, too. So, I just, I think it might confuse me when you say our water district being the San Gabriel one, right? We do our, our own water district.
Yeah, the city has its own water supply, water department, provides the retail service. We merely supply supplemental imported water to make up for, for additional needs that the four cities, yeah, supplemental.
Thank you.
Thank you, Director Love.
Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
We've been through it already once. I don't really have any.
There's many might have a few questions, but
I'd like to hear from the public, actually. I think they've been really patient.
They have. But we're, we're going to do questions before we hear from the public. Real quick, one.
Real quick one. I think we all know the answer to this, but just for the benefit of the public, our baseline here for water conservation is 2012, okay? So the 20% goes back to 2012. So anything that we're talking about in terms of Phase III is 30%. If you've been conserving since 2012 and you've conserved 20%, you're only talking about having to conserve another 10%. Is that not correct?
Correct, it's not 30% on top of the previous 10 or 20%. It's 30% total going back to the base here. So for some, some people may already be at 30%. Some may need five more percent to get there.
So it'll have a differential impact if we should choose to do that?
It depends on individuals conserving to this point, but it, the key is, it's not on top of the previous 10 or 20%.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? We'll open it up to public comment. And I assume there's going to be a lot, so we, you can have as much time as you like. We usually try to have you aim for three minutes, but if you need more, go ahead, just give me a sense if you know it's going to be more than three minutes, how much time you need. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Pete, 25 Sierra Place. I am a resident of Sierra Madre since 1975. A number of times in the past, the city has requested residents to conserve water during droughts. In response to these requests, I installed low-flow faucet and showerheads. We took shorter showers, still do, always fill the washing machine to the maximum. About eight years ago, I removed my front lawn and replaced it with drought-tolerant native plants and river rocks. My back lawn is reduced to a small area around the orange tree, which I water in the summer. Many residents still overwater their soggy lawns, wash down sidewalks and driveways. If one walks around our city during the night or early morning, streams can be observed running down the gutters. These people could cut their water use or waste by at least 30%. Lawns are appropriate for places like England or the tropics where supplemental watering is unnecessary. A characteristic of desert climate is rainfall under 10 inches annually. Last season, Sierra Madre received only about six inches. Lawns waste water. Also, lawn maintenance generates noise and air pollution. The LADWP's first-tier water charge is $4.65 per unit, or 100 cubic feet. Sierra Madre's charges $1.91 per unit, about a quarter of a cent per gallon. What does that say about how we value our water? The city could double the rate and still not equal what the LADWP charges. The LADWP also restricts water to three days a week. Many Sierra Madre residents water daily, rain or shine. The LADW, excuse me, the LADWP has a turf buyback program to encourage people to get rid of their lawns and to plant drought-tolerant plants. Drought-tolerant native plants also encourage birds and butterflies. My question is, how do I meet the Phase III requirement? My base period allocation is based on my water consumption long after I took conservation measures. What do I do? Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Pete. We should be asking you questions. Sounds like you're doing everything right, so thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor Harabedian, Vice Mayor Capocha, and members of the council. I'm Clem Bartoli. I've been a resident of the city since 1961. Tonight's meeting is one of those meetings I used to call a defining moment. The course of action you take tonight will define you as a member of the city council as well as be defining as it affects many aspects of the future of Sierra Madre. In the last few years in particular, we have felt the onslaught of development, both proposed and that which has been accomplished. It has become a glaring fact that the community cannot sustain monetarily any further load on our resources. Our Public Works Department is pushed to the limit. Our administrative and management personnel have been cut back considerably. Our community service personnel have also reached their limit. Our police and fire departments have a limited number of personnel, and further growth may demand that we create a full-time fire department. We are told that virtually every city department has a workload that cannot sustain, cannot be sustained, or cannot sustain more hours without hiring additional personnel. Then there are the water resources. I have a great deal of respect for our director, Love, and I too was encouraged by his comments. But will we ever see the wells replenished to where, once again, we become independent of the MWD? It probably will never happen in my lifetime. I hope that what I request of you this evening will reverberate with every speaker that comes after me, since I think it will define you individually as having the ability to take the best interests of Sierra Madre beyond that of the developers. Secondly, it will define this city council as having been one that carved out the destiny of our town in a manner that will preserve and protect it for future generations. So, vote to implement Phase III conservation with Phase I penalties for overuse. Vote to implement an immediate water moratorium. Vote to support an immediate building moratorium. Thank you.
Thank you, Clem.
Marguerite Schuster, Mount Wilson Trail. I too would like to both strongly support Phase III water conservation measures and to suggest that they are not enough without a building moratorium. The one perverse benefit of the now fading hope for a wet El Nino this fall is that it could disabuse us of the fantasy that we have only a short-term problem. The best data I am aware of suggests that drought conditions in the Southwest, whatever intermittent wet seasons we may have, will outlast any of us alive today. The situation is not less, but more serious than we are inclined to believe, as if we were entering a desert with a quarter tank of gas, read a two-year water supply, and no stations for hundreds of miles, and didn't worry because our car was going as fast as it ever did. Short-sightedness is disastrous. That means, at the very least, in our case, that we are foolish to rely upon imported water. Nobody in this part of the country is going to have enough over the longer haul. Therefore, we need to get back as quickly as possible to where we can rely upon our local sources by means of stringent conservation, beginning immediately with no new demands upon the system. Do not be seduced by builders who promise that their developments will be water-neutral. Clearly, such an outcome can be achieved only by their finding ways of saving water elsewhere in the city. But we need to employ all such potential savings to live within our means with respect to water over the long run, not to make new developments possible over the short run. Those who treat their bank accounts the way we are treating our water supply, just spending whatever they find there with the implicit assumption that more will magically appear from somewhere, go bankrupt. Demands from the Kensington are already going to increase pressure on a system that self-evidently is not sustaining itself. If it were, we would not need to import water. The purpose of a building moratorium is to give us time to develop a long-term plan for the sustainability of our community. And the most critical limiting factor for the foreseeable future is, in fact, the availability of water. Presumably, obviously, adding demand when supplies are decreasing makes no sense, and means that in the years to come, the whole town will suffer really crippling constraints that will make current measures look like nothing. Please, institute both a building moratorium and Phase III water restrictions without delay. Thank you.
Mr. Gold.
I am Barry Gold, I live at 441 Ramona Avenue. I'm Mayor Harabedian and council members. After struggling the past few days over several options, I have concluded that due to the severity of our water situation, I must urge you to implement Phase III of the water conservation plan with a Phase I 10% penalty provision. By limiting the surcharges to those who do not at least reach a 10% reduction target, you provide incentive to them to help mitigate our water problem, while at the same time, acknowledging that those of us who have diligently met our targets are to be appreciated instead of punished. Passing Phase III alone, however, is just not enough. I also urge you to pass both the water and the building moratoriums. Passing all three prevents additional pressures being put on our severely strained water system while also limiting the construction of unwanted housing developments. This will give you time, together with the community, to develop long-term solutions to both the water and the development issues. It should be noted that the building moratorium will not prevent anyone from repairing, remodeling, or even tearing down their existing homes and building a new one if they want. Section 2 of the ordinance makes it very clear that the moratorium does not apply to projects where a water service connection is already in place. In a little while, you will vote on these three issues. With all due respect, please remember that you represent the people of Sierra Madre, not the staff, not the developers, or any others with special interests. You have the power to fulfill your fiduciary responsibility to do that which is in the best interest of the people, which would be to pass both moratoriums and Phase III with a Phase I penalty. You also have the power, if you want to, to just let the developers have their way with us. When voting tonight, keep in mind, you are the government of the people. Your power to vote is given to you by the people. Please use this power for the people.
Thank you, Mr. Gold. Mr. Thomas.
Hello, my name is Tim Thomas, and I live on Edgeview Drive. And I would like to encourage you not just to only pass the Phase III provision, but if only we pass Phase III without having water moratorium or even building moratorium, then we're asking every citizen in Sierra Madre, every household, to fund, to fund the infrastructure for water. And let's say in two or three years, when a development comes in, and we've been paying for restoring our water infrastructure, they'll walk in and be able to just draw our investment away from us with no cost or no sacrifice of their own. It's patently unfair for us to not tie the Phase III portion of the water conservation with a water moratorium. Because if we're just doing Phase III, we're paying more taxes. Every property owner here, or every landlord here, will have to pay more for their water bill. And, you know, I think the majority of us here are okay with that in some degree. It's a cost-benefit analysis, but we see the need. But we don't see, we also see the unfairness of it, because we'll be paying a cost and the developer will not have to make that same payment. We don't want to, we don't want to be subsidizing future development in Sierra Madre. We want, we want our water to be our water and not some new, new person's water. That's our water, we're paying for it, it should stay with us. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Don't be shy, I know there's more out there. There you go.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, my name is Frank Nicholas. I'm with the law firm of Carlson and Nicholas in Pasadena. We represent CETT Corporation, the owner of Stonegate. I'd like to present to this council and ask that it be admitted into the administrative record a letter with an exhibit. I have 10 copies here, may I present it now?
Sure.
The letter is from primary counsel for CETT Corporation, Richard McDonald, who is of counsel to our law firm, and I am here in place of Mr. McDonald today. My comments will be very brief because the letter is rather in-depth. It's, it's our position that, you know, we're opposed to all that is being discussed tonight in terms of the ordinances, in terms of the moratoriums. We're certainly opposed to the building moratorium, because that certainly affects our client. At the base of all that is a determination that there is a water shortage emergency, and our position is, there is none. And we need, we need go no further than the comments offered by Director Inman tonight, that over the last 12 months, the reduction in terms of conservation is 12.7%. So the 20% goal offered by Phase II has not been reached. I need go no further than the comments today by, tonight by Director Love, that Metropolitan Water District has a robust supply of water, that that organization is under contract with the city of Sierra Madre up through 2035. The city of Sierra Madre has already purchased a water supply going back for the next two years. And Director Love also said, and this is not in quotes, I'm not the best note-taker, but that the city of Sierra Madre should be able to sustain a long-term water supply. Our position is that the efforts through Phase II have not yet been exhausted. And until they're exhausted, you cannot entertain moving to Phase III. Those are my only comments.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Mr. Bryant.
Matthew Bryant, Edgeview Drive. I first want to say that I appreciate the city council asking questions, because if Director Love would have sat down after his presentation, I think we all would have thought there was an overly optimistic picture of what our water situation is. But as the city council asked questions, Director Love conceded certain things. He said things like, we're at a critical time. He talked about two-year supply. So I think that's more consistent with the water crisis that we all believe exists here in Sierra Madre. In fact, I emailed each of you a recent article from the Star News. It talks about how bad this drought has become. In fact, it is no longer being labeled a severe drought by the experts, it's now called an exceptional drought, meaning we haven't seen anything like it in many years. For me and my family, it is very important that Sierra Madre be put on a sustainable footing. I don't want to rely on outside sources for this town's survival like the MWD or what Director Love was saying. I also don't want to be dependent upon the use of other cities, who may be very profligate and use up the supply too fast. And at the June 24 city council meeting, I believe that Mr. Inman even described the MWD as a tenuous source of water for Sierra Madre. So I want to be able to rely on our own wells, and the sooner we do that, the better. And yet simultaneously, with one of the worst droughts in California's history, we have a lot of big development projects in the pipeline. And it seems to me to be very irresponsible to be allowing additional housing projects and water uses, users, to come online, which will only exacerbate the problems we are now facing. So based on all this, it's safe to say that we need to be very careful about how we proceed going forward, because running out of water is not an option. We simply don't have any margin for error. We have to get this right. And I also don't want to... And I also don't want to see the can kicked down the road for a future city council to have to deal with when we could have even fewer options available to us. So in light of all this, I would favor an immediate water moratorium and building moratorium so that we can freeze everything in place to allow us time to gather the information we need to put Sierra Madre on a sustainable path for the existing residents and not put any more stress on our existing water sources. And I'd also like to address a question, if I may, to Madam City Attorney. It is my understanding that the water ordinance and the building moratorium need a four-fifths vote to pass as an urgency measure this evening. It is also my understanding that if they do not pass tonight, both ordinances can be brought back at the next meeting as a regular ordinance, which will require only a three-fifths majority vote. Is this true? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bryant. Please, yeah.
That's almost correct. The land use or building moratorium under Government Code 65858 will always require a four-fifths vote. However, the water code moratorium could be adopted by a four-fifths vote as an urgency measure, or as you suggested, it could also be rescheduled for another meeting for a first reading, a second, and then a 30-day period after that, and that would only require a majority vote. Four-fifths, however, is required if you want to adopt an ordinance as an urgency measure and have it implemented immediately.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney.
Good evening. I'm Carol Parker on Mariposa, and I've been asked to read two letters from two citizens who cannot be here because of illness. I don't know what the rule is, Mayor Harabedian.
Read as you want, please.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have anything to say. I came to watch, but I was asked to read, so thank you very much. All right. The first one is from Terrell Willis, who lives on Carter. Good evening. One of the greatest blessings in Sierra Madre has been our own water from our own wells. Overdevelopment and the drought have severely damaged our sustainability and have adversely impacted both residents and wildlife. As you know, Sierra Madre is a wildlife sanctuary impacting both residents and wildlife. And wildlife is, according to Resolution 7262, adopted in 1972, and the Planning Commission has recently approved the section of the general plan covering our coexistence with wildlife. The wildlife are struggling with the drought, just as we are, as well as decreasing habitat. Please remember them in your deliberations. If you take action tonight to implement a building moratorium and a water hookup moratorium, it will give Sierra Madre the time to chart the best course back to sustainability. Don't, please, condemn us to a lifetime of bad water, and don't punish us for mismanagement and a lack of foresight in the Water Department, once famously known as a cash cow. We need to learn from those errors and be proactive. The chance that the W M D cut us off by itself is motivation enough to take action now. A word about lawsuit threats. The original bad decision regarding Juan Carter, also known as Stonegate, was made under those circumstances. The council succumbed, and a remarkably poorly designed plan was approved. So it is taking years and years to build anything on those strangely configured lots. That area has been in the category of distressed real estate for a long while. The submission of the 2004 council did not, in fact, eliminate lawsuits, and we can learn from this that surrendering to threats only produces more threats. Please lead the community back to the blessing of our own water from our own wells. That was Terrell. Okay. And the other citizen is Chris Lechorek, and I'm not sure if I'm reading this right, on Camillo. Is there anyone that knows that?
Clerk.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Dear Honorable Mayor and City Council Members, considering the fact that our city's original water source has run dry, resulting in our having to purchase water from the M W D with no guarantee for prolonged availability, I think it would behoove us to do anything we possibly can to prevent further development or population growth in our city. It is plain and simple. No one knows when we might get more rain or snow. Here in California, only God knows that. But for now, what we do know is we have very little water in proportion to our growing population, both locally and statewide. We do not have control over the weather, but we do have control over whether we allow future development, knowing we may or may not be able to sustain the requisite water supply. The citizens who have lived here in this town for many years are blatantly aware of how much effort has been put into preventing the overdevelopment of our hillsides and village for decades, and many who fought the good fight have moved on to live elsewhere in pure frustration. We cannot go back and change history, but we can learn from the past and use the lessons we have learned to do better in the future. Common sense says, "Stop the senseless development," not only because it is changing what we'd like to think as a charming village into any town USA, but because we cannot sustain the continued influx of residents with water we simply do not have. Thank you for listening. I know you will do the right thing.
Because, oh, and I too have been, like Clem Bartoli, I too have been a resident of Sierra Madre since 1961. The difference between me and Clem is I was born and raised here. Because I have been servicing aquariums for 19 years, I strongly recommend against Phase Three and support both the water moratorium and the building moratorium. Fish are perhaps the only animals allowed to live in places like doctor's offices, restaurants, and salons. Every new building or unit has the potential for a tank as large as 800 gallons or more. Without proper tank cleaning, domestic fish die. A 20 percent water change must be done every two weeks with the old dirty water flushed down the toilet at one flush per gallon. This means 40 gallons per month for one 100-gallon tank, and that's a lot of water. When water is restricted, the first thing to go is often the aquarium. Phase Three could kill our fish as we are forced to reduce the number of service or completely get rid of our tanks while at the same time allowing even more and larger tanks and more flushing our precious water down the toilet, down the road, by allowing development and therefore permitting more tanks elsewhere in town. I do not begrudge new fish tanks in existing structures and units. We are entitled to our pet fish, but I do recommend keeping the fish population under control through the use of both the building moratorium and the water moratorium. Once again, I recommend we control our fish population and therefore our water use through both building moratorium and water moratorium. Yet to keep our fish, both old and new, healthy, happy, and safe, I recommend against Phase Three.
Thank you, Catralia.
Hi. I'm Alan Graves. I live at 60 East Grandview with my wife Jenny and our five-week-old son, who is also named John, apparently a going name.
You did good. You did well.
I came here tonight because I really strongly believe that our city needs vigorous and smart regulations that not only secure our future water supply, but ensure that we really can control growth in a meaningful way in our city over the future. When I first heard what was on the agenda tonight, I thought it was great. There is no faster way to a round of applause in Sierra Madre than to oppose development. It's a big winner every time, and it sounded good to me. But when I look closer, I'm actually concerned that as we're doing it without more, this will do more harm than good, both to our ability to limit water use and our ability to control development. And there's two problems that I see with what we plan now. The first is lost revenue. All three of the agenda items we're considering would impose a moratorium on permits with new water connections. Both the staff reports from June 28th and July 8th say that there, quote, "will be a reduction in development and planning-related fees, building-related permit revenue, and business licenses." No one's given us a hint how much money we're going to lose. A lot of you came to your seats promising to bring your business acumen to our city and to make business-like decisions. Step one is know how much money we're spending, right? We have no idea at this point how much money we'll lose if we stop taking in the revenue from these permits. When we look at how the permits are broken down, it turns out most of the money is allocated to staff fees. That is, these fees pay the salaries of the people who enforce our regulatory regime. How many months of not having these fees can we go before we cut staff, before we lose the very people we need to enforce our rules and regulations? Right now, you have no idea at all. I think we need an actual plan that quantifies how much money this costs, and before we shut off the revenue stream, makes a plan for how long we can keep that up before we have to find money somewhere else or let go people that we're ultimately going to need. The second issue has to do with the making of smart policy. Right now, all we're planning on doing is imposing a moratorium and effectively kicking the can down the road for two years. This bill does nothing to build smart new rules. We desperately need those. We need to look critically at big buildings being built at the outskirts of our town with big lawns and pools. We need rules and regulations that promote infill development, that promote adaptive reuse, that require zinescaping, that require new buildings to have an actual gray water plan. We need to do what other cities already are to actually reduce water use over the long time. What we're doing here doesn't do any of that. All it does is delay building issues for an indeterminate amount of time. So there's two things we should do different. The first is we should ask staff to produce a report quantifying how much this will cost. How much do we lose every month that we keep the window closed? And make a plan so we can actually keep the staff we need. The second is we should, along with any moratorium, appoint a committee to act quickly, within 90 days, to provide this council with actual recommendations for actual rules they can adopt that will solve this problem in the long term. We cannot use a water moratorium as a tool to squash development. If we do that, we'll just lose lawsuits. We can use it for a short time to actually impose useful rules, and we should do that. But you need to do it all at once. So the right thing to do tonight is to find out how much we're spending and make a plan. And two, have staff propose a new bill that will not only impose water moratoriums, but actually appoint some people to make the rules that we need and use this moratorium for what it's really supposed to be for, which is to develop the regulations we need, not just to kick the can down the road.
Thank you, Mr. Graves.
Good evening, council. My name is Heather Allen, and I live on Grove Street, and I've lived here all of my 42 years, and I love Sierra Madre very much. I'm here tonight because I'm going to ask you to approve the general plan immediately. I'm in favor of a building moratorium as well as a water moratorium, and I'm concerned about the proposed development at Mata de la Rosa Stonehouse and Juan Carter. I'm here, too, because I want to preserve the residents' right to water. I sat down to write my speech today, and I realized that instead of writing my own speech, perhaps it would be better to use the words of you, our elected representatives. What I'm about to say are direct quotes from your campaign literature from each of you when you ran in 2012.
Okay, that's, there's all of us. Yeah, that's right.
I have some stuff for Mr. Goss, too.
All right. Oh, that's right, yeah.
Mr. Kaposha. Pardon me.
He's much better looking than me.
Pardon me. Mr. Kaposha. Let me see if I've got this right. No. Yes, Mr. Kaposha. Okay. In the Mountain Views News, in February 25th of 2012, you wrote that you would promote policies that conserve our natural resources, such as our water supply and associated watershed, and protect our hillside so that future generations can enjoy our precious resources as we have. I hope you can keep your promise. Mr. Harabedian, you said in the sample ballot, "I will focus on preserving downtown and our open spaces. We can sustain our village integrity with smart, sensible planning based on a general plan that adheres to our values and tradition." And Mr. Goss, this was written in the Mountain Views News newspaper. The Mountain Views allowed each candidate to put a statement in prior to their being elected. And Mr. Goss wrote on March 3rd of this year, "I will stand strong against any entity that tries to impose development, that sidesteps our laws or is out of touch with our small-town consensus. Also, I would encourage and support sensible policies that will conserve and enhance natural resources, such as our water supply, our hillsides, and our urban forest." Gentlemen, we voted you in, and I ask you to please keep your campaign promises, and that's all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Heather.
Good.
I kind of feel left out. I don't know how Michelle feels.
Heather Allen will be deleted from every future mailer from now on. No, that was good.
Mayor and council members, John Hutt, Sierra Meadow. I think it's readily apparent from all the testimony we've heard tonight, there's a serious water issue, and Phase Three is a given. And as Marguerite and others have said, if we had a short-term problem, that would be fine. That would be enough. But we don't have a short-term problem. We have a long-term problem. We need a moratorium in order to get time so that we can put our development codes in place. It's important to note, though, that the moratorium doesn't do anything. It doesn't solve anything. All it does is buy us time. And as Alan and others have said, we need to do concrete steps while the moratorium is in place in order to update our codes and our regulations, in order to make sure that any future development and our existing built development conserves water. First, the general plan needs to be adopted, that Denise and I labored on for so long. But as we all know, it's a general plan, and we need specific zoning code updates. We need growth control ordinance so that if we have a limited number of water hookups, we can have the kind of development that we want, take priority over the kind that we don't want, so we can have infill development instead of new development in the hillsides, so we can have small bunkers instead of large McMansions, so we can have green, water-efficient projects instead of water hogs. We also need to do a better job on educating and publicizing the different water-saving techniques that the city and other agencies have. The state has money. The various member agencies that are too confusing to understand how they fit together have different programs. I just saw online today that San Gabriel Municipal Water District has a $150 rebate program if you buy an efficient washing machine, clothes washing machine. I had no idea about that until I started researching this today. Other cities have lawn abatement programs where they'll subsidize you to take out your lawn, water barrels, low-flow toilets. The list goes on and on. But all of those are good ideas that if we don't really do something about while this moratorium is in place, in two years or whenever it is up, we'll be back in the same place, only worse, because we won't be able to pause development again. So there's also two different moratoriums on the agenda tonight. The water moratorium does the same thing as the Phase Three. Don't care about it. Vote it in if you like. It makes people happy. The building moratorium is important, though, because it also puts a stop two different moratoriums on the ballot, on the agenda tonight. The water moratorium does the same thing as the phase three, don't care about it, vote it in if you like. It makes people happy. The building moratorium is important, though, because it also puts a stop on discretionary approvals rather than just water hookups at the end. So, if we don't have a building moratorium, what'll happen is there'll be conditional use permits, hillside development permits, subdivision maps, other things like that. It'll all get approved, and then soon as the water moratorium comes up, well, excuse me, we'll have a hundred different water hookups. So, that is an important component, and it also, I think, has a very good timeline. There's a rubric that the state's put in that will give the city discipline to really push forward with the future changes in our development regulations that we need so that in two years, we're not in the same place. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hutt. He, he cut in line. I'm sorry. No, I'm, no, I'm kidding. Good. I think there is an informal line, uh, starting back there, but go.
Mayor and city council members, my name is Daniel Braun. I'm the son of Peter and Roberta Braun and the grandson of Milton and Harriet Goldberg. My parents' dream is to build their retirement home in Sierra Madre on the land my grandparents purchased nearly seventy years ago. Uh, my mother wants to return to the property where she was born, raised, and saw my grandparents able to retire as active members of the community. I spent most of my childhood playing in Sierra Madre, growing up at Ramona and Sunnyside, appreciating and recognizing the importance of the community to which my grandparents were committed. My parents have been planning to build a small home that would be energy and water efficient. They recognize the enormous challenges that Sierra Madre faces in terms of water conservation. They plan on extremely low water use for long-term landscape irrigation and a light footprint. I do understand through friends and family the ordinance that is being considered regarding water conservation here in town. We all support the implementation of mandatory and voluntary water conservation by the city. We would like to request that the ca-, uh, city council consider within the ordinance regarding a water moratorium an exemption for homes like my parents, a single pre-owned lot that meets additional water efficiency measures being considered by the council. Like my grandparents, my parents want to be active members of the Sierra Madre community and live their retirement years in town. Thank you for the opportunity to represent my family, who support the need for water conservation, and at the same time, want to live and participate in Sierra Madre.
Thank you, Mr. Braun.
Daniel, may I have your write-up, please?
Come on down. Don't be shy.
Hi, my name is Chase Cruth, and I live at two sixty-three West Highland. I've lived in Sierra Madre for sixteen years, and I've grown up here. I'm closely watching how politics work in this town. I'm aware of campaign promises and how they are broken once someone gets in office. I'm also aware of the issues we are facing, and I've learned a lot. We have taken out many of our trees, let our lawn die, and paved over many places where we used to grow vegetables, fruit, and other plants. We're careful with water in the bathroom and in the kitchen. We have purchased new appliances that are water-efficient. Basically, we have spent and killed a small fortune trying to do our part. We're being told now to cut back more. I'm okay with that, but not if it leaves more water for developers, developers when they say there's no water crisis so they can push forward with mega developments. They're eager to steal what we are trying to preserve. The only way to preserve my town and help us get through the water crisis is to stop development. I urge you to vote with the many people who have spoken up in favor of moratoriums on developments and water meters. Moratoriums on building water are the only reasonable ways to allow us to get us time in the general plan motion to see where Sierra Madre will be in the future. The future of Sierra Madre is important to me. I want to be able to look ahead and see my hometown as a place I want to raise my family. I do not want to see it end up like many surrounding communities due to irresponsible development. If it does, the blame will fall on you. Please lead a way and set a positive example. Show integrity by following through what you promised. Vote in favor of the moratoriums.
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch your name. Thank you. You did a great job.
Future council, council candidate. That's right. Give it a few years.
I'm Andy Edmonds. I live at two sixty-three West Highland, and I also own six-one-eight West Highland. And I just wanted to say that I did email this, a draft of this, to five all of you. Three of you were kind enough and professional enough to respond, and I appreciate that, and I just want to say you have my respect, no matter what side of the issue you vote on. And the two who couldn't be bothered to respond, so be it. Anyway, I urge your support of the water moratorium and the building moratorium as a means to halt new and irresponsible development. I have allergies, so I'm a little bit, uh, here. Anyway, "Please stop the rape of Sierra Madre by outside interests that have no vested concern in our town other than turning it into a blighted and congested cash cow. We might not stop the inevitable, but at least we can slow it down. Think about the general plan. Give us some breathing time here. I have no smoking gun or big aha moment that's gonna, that I can offer that will make those of you against these mo-, measures suddenly change your mind. But you have heard concerned citizens speak out and point out numerous reasons why these measures must be enacted. Keep in mind that when we voted you in, we voted you to represent our voice and not yours. I have yet to hear many voices speak up in favor of development. Why we have to keep telling you the same thing over and over and over is beyond me. But let me add this. Voters are disgusted by politicians who make campaign promises and then systematically break them once they get into office. The sentiment goes all the way up to Washington and back down to Sierra Madre. The days of voters accepting double-talking politicians is over. Each of you, sitting at the table, campaigned on promises to preserve Sierra Madre. Not one of you campaigned as a pro-development candidate. For those of you who have higher political ambition, and those of you hoping to be re-elected, let me be as clear as possible. Your campaign platforms and your votes are public record. When the, with the internet and social media, they are easily accessible and will forever remain so. So will a move to recall you. It won't matter if it's successful, but the fact that one was attempted and the reasons why, because you lied on your campaign promises to us, will attach to your political record. Do not think that just because Sierra Madre is a small town, voters won't pay attention. The very fact this is a small town, and you cannot maintain your integrity here, will loom large in the future. So, please, stop playing these games. Have some backbone. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Jeannie Chung, and I'm reading a letter that is from my dad, Ting Hikku, who lives at Syracuse Drive. This was also emailed to the city council members last night, and I believe that he did also receive a few replies back, so thank you. Mayor and council members, my wife and I have been residents of Sierra Madre since nineteen-seventy-five. We are deeply concerned over the future of this great city and thus, thus strongly urge you to support the following three measures. One, implementation of phase-three conservation with phase-one penalties for overuse. Two, an immediate water mor-, water moratorium. Three, an immediate building moratorium. One of the basic charms and attractions of living in Sierra Madre is that it has retained its character for all of the almost forty years we have lived here. Certain developments, however, are causing us concern that this will not always be the case, and that the Sierra Madre of today might not be recognizable even ten years from now. The most immediate issue, of course, is the city's mounting water problem and the alarming, alarming depletion of local resources. The city's water crisis, in turn, is exacerbated by current and future development that lacks sustainability, is out of character with the rest of the city, and ultimately threatens to permanently change Sierra Madre for the worse. Our basic interest in those of fellow residents and neighbors that deeply care about Sierra Madre, one that we hope and trust that you share, is in a Sierra Madre that is and will always be sustainable and a desirable place to live, a place that we can all, that we can pass on to our children and their grandchildren. For these reasons, we urge you once again to support the three measures listed above. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chung.
I would like that letter.
Oh, Ms. Chung, could we get a copy of that letter? Thank you. Next, please.
Thank you. Scribbling notes on the bottom.
Evening. Um, I'm Vic Aguilar, fairly recent resident, uh, been in this town for about three years now, but, uh, very passionately involved in lots of issues, uh, in the community that I now call home. Um, fairly poorly prepared because in my calendar, I had this slated for the sixteenth, so I don't have notes or anything else, but I do have a couple of salient facts which I'd like to share with everybody, just to put perspective on what we're talking about. First of which, just consider the resource that the water supply that Sierra Madre has traditionally had represented. A fully autonomous water supply of impeccable quality, something that we did not rely on deeds or treaties, uh, aqueducts, or any other infrastructure, other than our own local water department. Um, what we've done now because of the lack of foresight and seeing this juggernaut of drought happening and climate change because of our pursuance of unsustainable models is, we have put ourselves, we've written off our indigenous water supply, and we've now put ourselves dependent upon MWD. Um, I just want to give you, uh, a quote relative to this water supply that we're dependent upon. This is Lucy Jones. Uh, she's, uh, the, uh, chief, uh, seismologist for the, uh, United States Geological Survey, and she was speaking in context to water supply for Southern California, specifically MWD. The, all the water that we're getting from MWD comes through the aqueducts that she's citing. She says, "All of that water has to cross the San Andreas Fault to get to us, and every one of those aqueducts is going to break when the earthquake happens." Absolute fact. Okay? So, what you're talking about is going from an autonomous, secure, sustainable water supply now to a position of complete haplessness. Here's another fact. The MWD is currently embroiled in a multi-billion-dollar lawsuit with a coalition of western states who are suing them for massive over-extraction. So, we're relying on an agency who apparently has been stealing water for years. Those chickens are coming home to roost, and the very water that they're bringing to us is coming through a highly vulnerable infrastructure, and the water that they bring to us actually undermines our health. Think about these issues when you are considering the kind of measures that we're gonna adopt. I'm saying that we need to go a lot further than that. We need to look at lawns, which are a major use of our drinking water. I'm an organic farmer. I don't have good water to water my organic vegetables with anymore because so much of it got wasted on these lawns, and it turns out that lawn chemicals definitively have been linked with increased risk of cancer. They're being banned in multiple provinces in Canada. So, there's a lot of things, uh, things that other speakers have mentioned also in terms of gray water, in terms of cisterns. We need to adopt a policy like Australia did back in the sixties when they made every single household mandatorily install a cistern, could subsidize those. The long-term benefits for us, we, we, we need to be serious about addressing this issue and see if we can, and, and the, the development moratorium, when you put it in context to actually what we're dealing with, I mean, it's a complete no-brainer. It's obvious that there's no way that we can actually undertake increasing a greater load on a system with such tremendous vulnerabilities. We need to get to a sustainable model, not only for water, but for energy and for all the resources that we rely on in this community if we want to protect our standard of living and what we call dear here in Sierra Madre. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Aguilar. Vic Aguilar? Vic Aguilar.
A-G-U-I-L-A-R. Okay, thanks.
Good evening. My name is Chris Cowell, and I'm at two seven-three West Laurel. And I likewise have not been a long-term Sierra Madre resident, but I have the advantage of coming from Tucson, Arizona, where we dealt with this decades ago. People had to get over having a lawn, even though they came from the Midwest or back east, and that's what they wanted, that's what they had. It just didn't work. At the time, we only had a groundwater supply. There were no other options. Now there are. There's a, a project that brings water in, but it was just simply, we had no other source of water. People had to get rid of their lawns. There were incentives. There was sort of a, um, incentive by your neighbors doing it, and look at how great their yard has turned out, and some people were guilted into getting rid of their lawns. I think there could be signs that the city could hand out to people who are doing their part. The city of Sierra Madre thanks you for letting your lawn go brown, and sort of letting those people that are on the fence, who are worried about what their neighbors are going to say if they let their lawn go brown while they're waiting to get the funds to re-landscape. And then I have a couple of questions, and it's to this thirty percent reduction. I'm all in favor, but I'd like to know how you address the homeowners, such as Bill Pete, who have already reduced to the point of, by two thousand and twelve, where they could not have a further reduction and still wash clothes and take showers. Or in our case, we had a faulty water meter in two thousand and eleven and two thousand and twelve. During the hot summer months, it did not record our water use. We were charged for two units of water in each month, July, August, September, but our target is based on those two thousand and twelve numbers. Our water target is lower during the winter than it is during the summer. It's, I mean, lower during the summer than it is in the winter. And I put in an appeal and never heard back. So, I'm wondering what provisions you're putting in place for those people who are doing their part and can't meet a thirty percent reduction to two thousand and twelve, and what you're doing for those people who don't care if they have to pay more to water their lawns, which are lush green and growing mushrooms at this time of year. Is there a system in place to, to address those issues? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cowell. Mr. Brady.
Uh, good af-, good evening, council members and Director Love. Um, the Brady family has lived at two twenty South Cannon for nearly twenty years. It will be twenty years in two thousand and eighteen, not too far. But over the next two years, we'll see how we do with our water conservation. I also served in our community as our Rotary President in two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve, and I'm intimately interested in the well-being of our citizens and our quality of life here. If you read the news today, California, the state of California will report that the twelve largest reservoirs in our state are at their lowest historic levels. And so, there's discussion in Sacramento about voluntary water conservation with a goal of twenty percent. Unfortunately, based on past history, what we've only been able to attain as a state has been a five percent reduction. So, the math doesn't bode well for our state's intentions. Now, earlier this year, I contacted Director Inman, and I wanted a copy of our Sierra Madre infrastructure of our water department. And in this report dated to, uh, two thousand and twelve, if you read carefully and closely, you'll find that, that we currently have a six-million-dollar liability to repair and replace our existing one-hundred-year-old water system. Any resident on Ramona has witnessed constant repairs to this frail system. So, as I look around the room, I do not see a developer standing up with a check for two million, or four million, or six million dollars to, to help underwrite this liability, which will not go away anytime soon. We really can't afford, and we can't meet our current water supply demand over the, and we'll find out how we do over the, the next two years. Um, I, it is my opinion that we should place an immediate building moratorium, see how we can practice conservationism, and, um, enjoy the sanctuary and, uh, and this quality of life that we have now. Please vote to preserve our Sierra Madre with prudent planning and a building moratorium. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Tom Brady. I'm the quarterback.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Jim Loving. We live at six-three-five Fairview Avenue, right around the corner from the monastery. We've only lived here twenty-two years, but, uh, wanted to speak anyway.
New timer.
We've heard this evening from representatives of the Meta de la Rosa that they fully intend to develop the acreage- to develop the acreage below the monastery, and in fact, have even hired a contractor to begin preliminary studies on how they're going to do that. It may not happen this year, three years from now, or five years from now. It's going to happen. It's a done deal. Here's my take-home message to the council. When you drive down 210 freeway, you look up toward our beautiful mountains, what do you see? One of the things you see is the monastery. It is a beautiful sight. When their construction starts, whenever that is, we're going to have the same situation that Glendale has, when they've over-expanded the hillsides behind Sierra Madre. That's what you're going to see from the freeway. That's what we're going to see from downtown. That's what's going to increase our traffic, our precious water supply, and everything else. Here's my message to you as the council members. You have an opportunity in the months and years ahead to establish zoning laws, to limit the height of the buildings on the hillside to one story. As Ray been mentioned very eloquently earlier about how we need to improve our zoning laws and other regulations for the city, limit the size of the height of the buildings to one story, and that would solve a lot of our problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Loving.
Hello.
Hi.
Mary Skousen Radford, 775 Woodland Drive. Didn't really plan on speaking tonight or bragging about my residency, but both sides of the family, 1940s, so I've been here, fourth generation. I live up in the canyon. Many people in the canyon don't have yards at all. Our water consumption is, we've been conserving for many years. My husband warms up the shower by collecting the water and pouring it either into the toilet to flush it, or to water plants around the house. I don't know where we could cut 30%. So I don't know what the solution is, really, but I know for some of us, all of our water usage is for necessities of life. So maybe more of a nuanced approach to cuts could be called for. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could we get your name? Sorry. Can we get your, just for the record?
Mary Skousen Radford.
Would you spell your last name?
S-K-O-U-S-E-N hyphen Radford, R-A-D-F-O-R-D.
Thank you.
Good evening. I appreciate your patience and listening to everything we have to say tonight. I just want to tell you a little fairy tale. There once was a beautiful, special little town. The name of this fairy tale is "The Pied Piper and the Treasure." This town had a wonderful little treasure in it. In fact, it was a very big treasure. It was known worldwide. It was very famous. Happened to be the biggest flowering plant credited in the world. One day, a very adventurous, talented businessperson, who are brilliant scientists, came into town and said, "My name is P. Piper, and I can make this plant so much bigger and so much better, you're going to make a lot of money on this. People will come and pay. Listen to me, I know how to take care of your problem. You'll make a lot of money." Well, that sounded like a pretty good idea. Then this kind of a fusty old guy from a college, it's Cuthbert B. Egbert or somebody, he came and said, "No, no, no, you can't do this. This will destroy the plant." And this man said, "No, I can expand this plant, make it beautiful, and you will make a lot of money. So please listen to me, I know what I'm talking about. I'll make you money. You need money. And I think you know what I'm talking about. Do we want to preserve our treasure of Sierra Madre, represented by our beautiful wisteria plant, or do we want to follow the path of the Pied Piper? And you, remember, if you, from your childhood experiences, what happened to the Pied Piper in the town? Thank you."
Thank you very much. Could we have your name? I'm sorry, for the record.
Elaine McPherson, Sierra Madre Boulevard.
Great. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor New Dad and council members. It's nice to have a full house, isn't it?
It is.
Makes for a long night, but it's nice to have a full house when you have articulate, smart, engaged citizens. And they're here, and as many years as I sat in those chairs, I often said, "The best presentations and the best solutions come from this side of the dais," so it's nice that you're listening. Now that all of this has been said, from my point of view, I try to like, put everything all together and come up with some sort of a summary approach to this whole thing, and so that's what I've tried to do, listening to all these folks and adding my own opinions, of course. So the three items that you're considering this evening are, of course, related. They're related to each other, and they're related to other plans, other documents, other regulations, but they're not interdependent. They're each individual, they're each unique. Lack of water is a common denominator, but each item serves a purpose and directs a different and irrelevant outcome. I realize outcome isn't a popular word among government officials, but outcome is important. So I thought I would take a look at each of the three in terms of what's the purpose and what's the outcome. So we look at implementing Phase 3 of the Water Conservation Ordinance. What's the purpose? Reduce water consumption with the hope of sustaining the water needs of current residents for health and safety for an extended period of time. How extended, we really can't be sure. To take a more serious approach to conservation, number two. Number three, trade the reduction in fees, you may not like this one, trade the reduction in fees for water usage for an increased rate garnered from the penalties if you choose to implement them. And number four, prohibit new water hookups until conditions change. So what's the outcome of this? A fairly pointed purpose. The outcome actually will be largely punitive measure with very questionable achievability. We have all been conserving water for several years, and in many cases, can do no more. And there comes a time when each household has to assess the loss associated with no water against the penalties incurred to preserve value. For example, saving large mature trees. That may be worth the penalty. Allowing yellow water to run clear, even if bucketing for water outside, may be worth the penalty as opposed to the health hazard. Then we look at the moratorium on water service connections. What's the purpose? To manage our water resources to sustain the current residents until more permanent solutions can be defined and acted upon. Don't impose upon current residents to sacrifice quality of life for additional new residents because there really aren't any new resources. So what's the outcome of the water moratorium? It will allow the time needed to establish long-lasting resource management policy, especially with regard to water. It can remain in place for as long as necessary and warranted by the current and future drought conditions. A long-term solution won't be easy, and many avenues have to be explored. Everything has to be evaluated, from digging a new well, to repairing the East Tunnel, to forging new contracts, to praying for rain. Prohibiting new, another, another outcome of the water moratorium is to prohibit new water hookups that would, and it will make us, it will make us look to find solutions to the problem, even if conditions calling for Phase 3 conservation change, and they can change. Very importantly, the general plan technical report can be updated to reflect the need for resource management. You remember, the general plan began almost five years ago, at no fault of the committee, I will remind you. And again, the city water management plan has to be updated. That's fairly old even in and of itself, and certainly doesn't include any of the issues about the rid of the, of the lack of water. The third thing is the building moratorium. What's the purpose of that? Allow time to approve the general plan update. All of these rules and regulations that a prior gentleman was talking about, and the need to put these rules in place, that's been done, and it's been done by a citizen committee as he suggested. It's called the general plan. And once that's approved, and the zoning ordinances, as Mr. Hutt has brought up, will be matched to that general plan, we have those rules and policies in place. And as I've said before, it is the people's document, and it's your responsibility to implement it accordingly. Also, because of the building moratorium, it would prohibit new construction, which would require the installation of new water hookups, or the activation of installed hookups à la One Carter, until there is sufficient water to sustain current residents. So the outcome of the building ordinance? Establishment of long-term resource management policy, very important. Perhaps the crafting of a growth management ordinance to be incorporated into the general plan, like the hillside ordinance and the canyon zone ordinance, to make sure that future development demonstrated good stewardship of limited resources. And in answer to the gentleman who spoke recently about one-story homes and so on, the hillside ordinance certainly does define in the hillside areas that homes must be built to conform to the land. Those rules are there. Another outcome of the building ordinance, it would be, could be policy that could specify in policy that there be a net zero water consumption element, meaning that the water which would be used by the development would have to be saved elsewhere at the expense of the developer. Or perhaps it's a two-for-one swap in a property, for everyone that's developed to have to be saved. There are lots of creative ways to, to look at that. Again, there could be policy that would have to specify that any new housing development provide for a certain number of low-mod units on site to satisfy the RENA number, which will be imposed on us by SCAG due to the increase in overall units. Now I know that's a topic a lot of people don't understand, and it takes a while to really understand the lunacy that occurs at SCAG, but if you spend enough time there, you do eventually get it. And there will be a requirement to put low-mod units here somewhere. If they're not incorporated in the development that's being proposed, they got to go someplace. And according to SCAG, whose, whose attitude is, "You don't have to build them, you just have to provide for them," they will trump personal property rights and require that you upzone individual property in order to provide these units. It's a very real threat. It takes time to understand, and I'm going to be talking about it all the time. Another outcome would be recognizing that the MWD connection is really not a guarantee. As a matter of fact, recital one of the 2013 agreement stipulates that the water allocated is not to be used to accommodate growth. So the outcomes of the moratoriums are really quite similar. They are stepping back, putting things on hold, and taking the time to develop the best policies to keep Sierra Madre the way it is, which is what the people want and what they've entrusted you to do based on your promises. This is not an anti-development movement. This is an appeal to preserve the quality of life in our village city.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Halseyam?
Halseyam Kerber, West Bonita. It is never wise to follow Mary Ann McGilchrist.
It's not.
However, I just have a quick question. Should the council opt to implement Phase 1, 2, or 3 of the penalties on water this evening? I would like them to please clarify for all of us if there will be a UUT assessed on that additional penalty fine, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Halseyam. Any other comments? All right. The grand marshals have nothing to say. It's not a meeting unless the Alcorns say something usually. Okay, they're good. We'll bring it back to the council.
Would you like me to respond to the conservation-related?
Sure. I was, that was going to be my first ask.
I thought so. If the city council decides to go to Phase 3, Councilmember Goss asked earlier, I did ask the question earlier, it's not another 30% on top of whatever the customer's previous conservation target is. It would be a total going back to the base, base year of 2012. All of the customers will receive new letters notifying them of what their new targets are. All of our customers, it is built into our water conservation ordinance that if a customer for the broken meter example, a new baby in the house example, their house is completely already retrofit, and they have, you know, a zero-scape yard already, all of those things, they can apply for an appeal of their conservation target. We should have, and I'll follow up on the one resident who spoke who said she wasn't followed up on. We follow up on each of those, we handle the appeal, and we can adjust conservation targets based upon the circumstances that are actually occurring at that, at that home. The other thing I wanted to mention is that there is a minimum amount of water in our ordinance that people can use. You drop below that, and you will not have to conserve any more. From memory, I believe it's 11 units of water, so if you're using 11 units of water, you don't need to conserve any more. That's, that's the sort of the, the lowest limit that the council's already established. So if you're already at 11, you don't need to go, you don't need to go lower. The question regarding the penalties, there is already previous council action, there are no penalties. They're on hold until November, so staff, you know, that's why it's not mentioned in the staff report, that'll come back to the council in, in November. And there's also prior council action that if penalties are ever implemented, again, the current council direction is that there was no UUT assessed to the penalties. That's already been addressed previously.
Thank you very much.
Did I answer everything?
I'll open up to the, to the council for comments, and whoever wants to go first, feel free. Councilman Delmar, it is your, it's your item if you'd like to go, so.
Always have to go first.
That's right. I was gonna, I was gonna give someone else a shot.
First of all, you said anybody who wanted to volunteer, and you didn't really get a chance.
I know, but no one was biting, so then I just had to look to you.
Okay. Well, I thank all, every single one of you who came tonight, who wrote to us, who called to us. We certainly have a lot of really smart folks here in Sierra Madre, and we appreciate you taking the time to come out and express your opinions. I'm just going to say that for me, what we need to do is conserve. It's obvious we are in a water shortage, although some people seem to think we're not, we are, and we need to conserve. We need to try to get, we're not even at 20% now, folks. We need to get a little lower than our 12% that we are. So we really need to work on our conservation. We really need to look at those incentives and look at our, how are landscaping and the turf removal that Councilman Capoche is so gung-ho on, you know, let's see if we can get that going. So we do need to go to a Phase 3. We need to have that 30% conservation as a target and not imposing any fines tonight, and that would give us the water moratorium hookup for any new water moratorium, water hookups. As I said in the previous city council meeting, it's not enough. We, we have to look long-term. We have to go out 30, 40 years and how Sierra Madre is going to be. The only way that we can do that is by making sure that our general plan has everything in it that will cover another bad drought like this. We have to look at our zoning, we have to look at our supply and demand, and come up with ways, creative ways, think out of the box, on how we can sustain our existing customers and our future residents, on how we can use the, the water that we have here in Sierra Madre, so that we're not dependent on the Metropolitan Water District, and we don't have to take any more water. So I absolutely would like to put a building moratorium in. The reason being is because it forces us, the city council, to be accountable. We have to come up with a plan. We have to start asking our residents. I've been writing all these notes down because I think you came up with a lot of good ideas to put into that plan, so we have to do that. But I also think we need to have, go even stronger and really get our supply and demand, our supply up, and the only way we can do that is by the water moratorium. That allows us to get our aquifer up, our supply up to where it needs to be, so that once we have our building moratorium and our, in place, we do our plan. Once we get that in place, and we know how we can use our water conservatively and efficiently, then we'll be able to sustain our population currently and the housing that may come in. And I'm also very sensitive to the folks who have really worked really hard to conserve, and I, I asked some of them to email me, and I have a list of ideas that they came up with. And I'm also very sensitive to the people who, Daniel, who drove all the way up here from San Diego because his family wants to come and live here in Sierra Madre, and we put this building moratorium in, and it will delay that. The building moratorium, I don't see as forever. This is only temporary while we come up with a permanent solution. So, you know, and I understand from Daniel- So, you know, and I understand from Daniel's family that they are gonna have a very efficient, water-efficient home. So that's where I stand. I would like to see us go to phase three. I would like to see us go to, have a water moratorium, and I'd like to put a building moratorium, knowing this is temporary, it's not anti-development, it's temporary until we can come up with a permanent plan to sustain Sierra Madre.
Thank you, Councilmember. Who wants to go next?
I'm so impressed with how many people came out tonight and very moved by the level and the depth of the comments I'm hearing here. It's a very serious issue, obviously. I don't think we've dealt with, will be dealing with any more serious issues than this in my tenure here on the, on the council. I wanna thank everyone who's emailed me. I've got a lot of emails. I tried to respond to all of them, but evidently my iPhone has not served me well. It's like three, I'm about three years out of date. I haven't updated the software, so I'll find them in there somewhere, but my apologies, my profound apologies if you did not get a response to me. I did read every email I received and took them all very, very seriously. I also wanted to make a side note. I should've mentioned this in our last council meeting, but on the 23rd, the day before our last council meeting, I did, after sitting on requests to contact Madre de La Rosa and for some time, I finally thought, as a matter of courtesy, I would contact Mr. Thornton, who's here tonight, and I called him in a brief conversation with him, and I told him I'd, I had been invited to participate in meetings with them to learn about their project. I informed him on the 23rd that I would not be doing that. I appreciated the invitation, but I didn't think it was appropriate for me as a council member to do that until the, the issue had been fully vetted in from the public, and it's gone through the process, including the planning commission. So we had a very congenial, short conversation. I believe I caught him in Dublin Iron at the time. He was very accommodating to me, and I thank him for that. Just wanted to make sure that that was on the record. There have been several things that I was on, in favor of phase three in our last meeting, and several things have come to my attention since then that are pretty significant in nature, and I wanted to touch on them briefly. First, I received this letter, I mentioned it earlier tonight, and this letter's from the MWD dated 24th. It was actually the date of that meeting, but I didn't get it till Friday, this past Friday. And let me just read, under the subheading drought, Metropolitan is pursuing, and this is to our city, Metropolitan is pursuing an aggressive voluntary approach to lower demands by promoting conservation education, consumer and commercial rebates for water savings products, and here, here's the kicker, local adoption of drought ordinances. That got my attention. It seems to me that when MWD is telling us that they are encouraging localities to adopt drought ordinances, we ought to take that very seriously. Another thing that I thought, had, that came onto my radar, and I do think Matt Bryant, he sent out that email to all of us about the article in Pasadena Star News, but there are other sources in the media as well that talked about the, the increasing unlikeliness of a El Nino event, according to meteorologists. It seems to be every month, the chances seem to be diminishing more and more, and that's quite disheartening to all of us. I know that is, and it bears directly on what we're talking about tonight, because as you, if you're listening in the last meeting, I was taking that into account, thinking, well, maybe we could wait till October, November to reconsider these things if we had some idea that we were going to get some relief from an El Nino event. Now that looks like it's less likely. Frankly, I've heard all kinds of arguments here tonight. One argument keeps coming up that really resonates with me, and it's basically the argument, I've talked to a lot of people face-to-face, and in fact, I got my ear chewed off at a Fourth of July party I went to about this. And pretty much everyone had the same view. It's not that they're anti-development or pro-development, but if they hear that they're being asked to make major sacrifices, like cutting down their water use when they've already been using, cutting down their water use, and they've already had to pay more water rates, very high increases in water rates, and, by the way, some of them are not getting water that they can even drink, they get upset when they don't see everyone having to make those sacrifices. This, to me, is an issue of equity, pure, and simple. It's not about development, it's about treating people fairly. So I think we ought to do that. I think we ought to treat people fairly, and that argument has, has me persuaded. So because of these developments, and because of some of the other comments I've heard tonight, I'd like to do the following, and I think I'm in, pretty much in sympathy with Councilmember Del Mar. I'd like to pay, pass our, our phase three water ordinance tonight without penalties, and I'll tell you why. I've heard too many people tell me that if we put penalties on them and they're having to run the water for 10 minutes to get the yellow out, that they're gonna be unfairly penalized. We need to take some time to find an equitable way to, to deal with those. There's a number of people in town that are gonna face that, and I don't think that's fair at all. So that water decoloration problem, when it's solved, we need to be ready to act quickly and, and institute those penalties. I think we need, we need to do that intelligently and aggressively, but not now until those, those people have their situations relieved. I think we should pass the urgency ordinance prohibiting new water service connections for the same reasons that Councilmember Del Mar mentioned. And I think we should pass the building moratorium. I'm not committed to either 10 or 20, 10 months or two years yet. We will make that decision in our next meeting in 45, less than 45 days, but I'm willing to go where the council wants to go on that. I don't think it's really that important. I know that what we're trying to achieve here is we're trying to make a plan so that we alleviate the issues having to do with over-water use by new developments. And there's a lot to that plan. Rainwater, I campaigned on this this spring, if you look at my campaign ledger. By the way, Heather Allen, I lost that election 2012. That was the flyer that I lost, but you know what? I campaigned on the exact same issues this year. So you got me. But I feel, I feel very strongly that we have to, we have to take this, these, this, the whole concept of water conservation, take it up to the next level. How much time will that take us to get there? I don't know. Will it be within a year? Will it be two years? I'm not sure. I'm open to a good argument in our next meeting when we make that determination. Finally, if we do all these things, I am persuaded that we should consider empowering some sort of device, maybe volunteer patrols, maybe the city, I'm not sure how to do it. But there are people out there and that, you know, maybe they don't know they're doing it, maybe they don't care they're doing it, but there are people in our community who are watering the streets, and there are people who are still washing their cars and washing their sidewalks. I think we need to send somebody out there to remind them not to do that, maybe give them a warning on the first hands, maybe on the second instance, maybe a $50 fine or something like that, maybe a volunteer patrol, so this doesn't eat into our police and their valuable time patrolling our city for public safety. I'm not so sure how to do that. Maybe we can agendize something like that for a future meeting, but I think we really should be talking about it. We're facing a very, very serious challenge here. We need to pull together as neighbors, as a city, and I think we will meet that challenge. Mr. Mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilmember Goss. Councilmember?
Yes, that means I'm next. It is nice to see this city hall full. I think even in our commission meetings, I think the most we've got in the community services, maybe like five or seven, right? Chairperson Alcorn? So first of all, thank you all for showing up today. I, I'm, it's, to see civic duty and civic engagement at its best, it's, it's very rewarding to see this. So I thank all of you, not just for showing up, for those of you at home that I know were not able to attend. There were many emails, it sounds like, that many of us received and phone calls, and I hope I responded to everyone. I think I may have. But again, thank you. And I know some of, some folks even asked if I could read them, but I wasn't able to pull those up. But I think there's a good representation here in the room as to what the sentiments are for a lot of the emails that I received. Secondly, I do want to apologize for missing a meeting. I, I have to say, I was just embarrassed that it was, what, meeting number four that I missed, but please understand that was a family reunion that was scheduled way before I even started campaigning. But be assured that I did watch the city council meeting on, on CD. It was great entertainment. And, and so all of the words of, of folks that were speaking during public comment at that time, also, I, I had the time to listen to that. So with that being said, I, you know, there's so much that has already been said, not just for us, our fellow council folks here, but from people in, in the room, and again, through the emails. I think I, the one probably piece that I still think about and I question is, is the phase three simply because of the penalty side of it? The way that the ordinance is set now, or the resolution is, and the way that the previous council has set forth, there are no additional penalties, so I, or I should say, the fines are not being implemented at this time, so that gives me some type of assurance, because that is one of the concerns that was brought up by a lot of, of the residents, is that they have been making conservation efforts. They've been doing it for over the years. But again, to understand that it is on the 30% based on the baseline in 2012, and that at this point, there are not additional penalties for that. But with respect to everything else, I, you know, we think we, as a city, need to look at long-term sustainability. I joked before about doing the rain dance. I heard the rain dance being brought up a couple times today, and, and El Nino. And as much as I know we probably had one of the best water sources around, at this point, we cannot foresee that in the near future, so we do need to think long-term. We need to think big picture, and we need to be strategic about it. What makes sense to me about the two moratoriums is actually a lot of things that were already said today. It gives us the time, and that's the time that we need to really look at not just our general plan, which is an important piece, because we know that is the people's document and that we keep hearing over and over, but also it gives us time to look at these ordinance that will be very specific to, that, that relate to what was set forth in general plan, that really help us look at the issues, that look at development, if necessary, and it is a development issue. I, I know that we try and keep it separated, but they are related, and we have to be able to understand how those, the, the water and the development are interrelated together. In addition to that, I think it was said by Mr. Graves, and I think it was Mr. Hud, I'm not sure, but just really questioning about the overhauling of our, our zoning and our, our zoning and our ordinances and governance, and, and making sure that really what our regulations really are aligned with what the people want in terms of the general plan. So I do agree that both the water moratorium and the building moratorium do that. And as much as the, the phase three, I know it can be of question, there is a piece in there that does support the no additional water meters and no additional water hookups. And to have the three pieces together, I think just strengthens the work that we're trying to do here, the expectations we're trying to do, have with the residents, and again, the overall strategic plan is what we're trying to do with the city.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
My first comment, I'm really proud of my, the new, my new peers on the council for, so, articulating these issues so well, so I don't feel like I have to say much, because you did such a good job in representing views that I also share. I do wanna emphasize one point, though, is just the concept of what I've heard over and over is, our town and its traditional source of water is something that we all value very much. So I do have some suggestions of, when we get to the point where I think this should be in some of the recitals, that the town values our water supply, and it's actually, in my mind, it's a source, it strengthens our identity and just how we view ourselves as a village. It, it is very important, so. So that's the key for me. I wanna get back to, we need to figure out a way, again, to mitigate the impact of new development on our water supply. And by the way, this is very clearly in the general plan that we're looking to approve. And, you know, I'm in favor of getting that done as soon as possible, but I think even more important is that we always look at that before we make any decisions, and this is a good case where we, I think, need to pause with development until we can get that general plan implemented, and also to ensure that the general plan does reflect some of the concerns and comments that were made here tonight, and it may, and it may not. But the, the silver lining behind the water problem now is that it has caused a lot of you and other citizens to think very deeply about how our town is affected by development, and we should use this momentum and this energy that we have into looking at that general plan and ensuring that it is the, the true roadmap for where we wanna see our town to be in, in the past. And I did comment at our last meeting, our former mayor, Clem Bartoli here, is how we had to take two stabs at the hillside ordinance to get it right, and I just wanna be sure we get it right now, because developers are very clever and market forces are very powerful. We are a victim of our own success here in Sierra Madre by keeping this town the way we like it, and that has caused property values to escalate, and that causes additional pressure from developers. So let's take this opportunity and make sure we get it right, and until we do, I'm absolutely in favor of going with the phase three water conservation, the building moratorium and the water, the water ordinance also. And I just do wanna comment, too, with regard to penalties on phase three. Just a reminder, it's been mentioned, but our water superintendent, Jose Reynoso, has been given very broad latitude to take your particular circumstances into consideration. And I don't think anybody is looking over his shoulder to force him to implement a penalty if you are able to convince him that you have extenuating circumstances. So please, take advantage of that. If you think that the penalty, we're not talking about penalties today, but when we do get to that point, please take advantage of that and make your, your concerns known, and I'm predicting a favorable outcome for those that have made a good faith effort to conserve. So with that, I'd like to just propose again, I think it's consistent with what everybody's saying, but we'll look at the penalties later on, but I am in favor of all three and dealing with the penalties sometime in the future.
Thank you. And thank you to my fellow council members and obviously to the public. It's been said, but it makes our job so much easier when you have such informed, smart residents that are willing to come here and sit here for three hours and tell us what they, what they know and what they think and what we should do. And a lot of cities aren't like that, so we're very fortunate. And this team up here, you know, we're, we're working through this just as you are. And to hear you guys give us, you know, your own personal stories and stories about your neighbors is really helpful. And, you know, with that being said, I'm in favor of all three as well, and, you know, for various reasons, but I think that, not to retrace, retrace ground, I think that the, the real goal here is to get back to our own water supply. When we went to the MWD connection, it was a temporary emergency measure. It says right there in the contract that, to the extent that we're using MWD water from our water district, it couldn't be used to, as it was said, to encourage or sustain development or growth. And that's clear in that, in that contract. It's clear in the, in the agreement that we, that we entered into with MWD. So as soon as we went to MWD water, I mean, we had grounds to make the findings to go to a water moratorium and a building moratorium and to phase three. And I'm very confident that the, despite what we heard from one particular speaker, I, I'm very confident that we can make the, the findings. I think there is a threat to public health and safety and welfare, and I think that this is going to be a lot of work now that we're gonna institute the moratoriums. I think that the, the hard work starts now. This is easy. I mean, we're, we're instituting the moratoriums to really come up with a plan so that in three to five years, and I think it's gonna take at least that long, we can start pumping from our own wells and not importing water, and we can start doing that without the fear of having to go back and using MWD water. But I will say, I think the conservation, and I said it before, is a really, really important part of that, and I think you guys are doing a great job. I think on the whole, we're doing a really good job, despite, you know, again, 12% isn't where we need to be. And if you do walk around, as Mr. Pete said, you do see some soggy lawns, and that isn't good. I mean, it's not good to see certain neighbors with just a complete dead lawn, brown, drought-resistant landscaping, and then others with just pristine green lawns where they're watering so much that it's just going into the gutter. And I think that we're in a tough spot. We're in a tough spot, and I, I realize that it's not gonna be overnight where this change happens, but I think in, in a couple years, we really do need to get to, to the point where folks are gonna be willing to give up their lawns. And I think it's, it is probably gonna be a generational thing. I think it's gonna be, you know, my generation becoming homeowners eventually, probably not in Sierra Madre because it's so expensive, but, you know, in, in neighboring communities, realizing that, you know, planting the lawn in the front and the back like my parents did just isn't, it's not sustainable, it's not viable. So I do appreciate where all, all of our residents are, which is at a place where we're using substandard water compared to what we're, what we're used to, and having to, to deal with that. And I realize that that is affecting our conservation levels, but I think going forward to get back to our own, to pumping our own wells and pumping them, you know, for the future, we are going to need to conserve more. I am also not in favor of instituting penalties right now. I think that, you know, with more education, and as Councilmember Goss said, maybe some sort of water patrol, I think folks will get better, and I think that we'll get better conservation. And I'm, I'm in favor of doing, you know, voluntary conservation in the meantime. Maybe we can bring Mr. Pete in and educate everyone. I mean, I think that there are folks in Sierra Madre that have it completely right, and they've done it for years. they've done it for years, and they just really need to impart their knowledge on, on some of us. And I really do think that this next ten months to two years, you know, however long we do have, you know, the moratorium, the water and the building moratorium, I do think that we're going to ask a lot of folks to come in and help us with these, with these measures. And to Mr. Graves and Mr. Hutt, I assure you, there's a long list, a long list of things that we already have in mind for a plan. It's not shown in the resolutions tonight, but we have already started talking about what we need to do, and the timeline, if we were to do it quick, would probably take eighteen months, two years. I mean, we have a lot in mind, and not only the general plan, but other things to help folks to conserve more and to actually promote conservation-minded development. And with that, I'll just say that, you know, the last part was folks like the Broncs that have a project in mind that is going to be a sensible project, that is going to be wise when, in terms of water use. And I think part of the project and part of the plan that we're going to be unfolding over these next months are going to be finding out how soon we can kind of incentivize those types of projects to go forward. And I think that the whole point of this is to make sure that Sierra Madre contains and hopes that any new development, to the extent that it happens, is very water-conscious and is very, you know, environmentally friendly. And it sounds like the project that you're talking about is like that. So, we want to do everything that we can to incentivize that type of development, if at all. So, there are going to be some losers in this process, and that is certain projects that haven't gotten off the ground, that are good projects, that aren't going to be a significant strain on our water. And we're going to work expediently to make sure that we can find a way to, to make sure that those can go through at some point. So, with that, I think that, you know, I will propose a, or I will entertain a motion. It sounds like we have consensus for all three, the building, sure, go ahead.
I just wanted to add my, so I know it's been a long evening, so, to the Broncs and anyone else who's in your, who is in your situation, I add my voice to the mayor's. We will work very hard to try to find a way to give you an incentive to be able to meet our, our new criteria because you're not at fault here. You've got a great project, single-family home, drought-tolerant plants, very low water usage, long history in this city, and we want to do everything we can to, to give you some kind of relief in this process, so we definitely have you in mind. We'll, we're going to do everything we can.
And with that, entertain a motion. And I think the Mayor Protem had maybe some additions.
Yeah, just based on, you know, what I've heard tonight, too, again, with the concept of how important our local source of water, may I suggest a couple of additional recitals to place? This fits mostly, I think, into the building moratorium, but you tell me if it applies to the others, too. But, but first of all, I just want to say, just whereas for a hundred and seven years, our traditional source of water has met our needs, and we are now at a point where our traditional source cannot sustain additional pressure from new development. So, that's one. Next one, whereas Sierra Madre takes pride in the quality of our water, such water is part of our legacy and our identity, or such water, I'm going to give you this, by the way, too. Such water is an important part of our legacy and identity as a village.
But I'm looking at it, and you really won't be able to read it.
No, you're not going to be able to read it at all. I'm looking at it, too. I am not making that up.
Okay. Okay. Whereas our citizens desire to avoid importing lower-quality water, whereas imported water increases the cost to all users, Proposition 218 prevents us from creating a new class of user for new development. Now, I don't know if that's appropriate or not, but that's the truth. We discussed it when we put the water rates forward. Whereas the state water project delivery is at historic lows and is the sole source of water of the San Gabriel Valley Municipal Water District, who is our wholesale emergency supplier. Does anybody have any comments?
That's second to last one, could you?
I don't understand that.
The last, yeah, that one.
Oh, well, we asked, yeah, for those of you who weren't on the council before, but what we-
Even me.
I'm just a reminder for you.
And he was there.
We, we did, we asked the question with the rate consultants and our attorney if we could charge higher rates for just new development. The answer was that Proposition 218 does not allow us to do that. So, we could, we could capture through development fees, infrastructure costs, but not the cost of importing water. As, as you know, like when we pump from our wells, our production cost is about ninety dollars an acre foot. From the tunnels, it's absolutely zero, I believe, just the cost to treat it with chlorine. But we pay right now to our water district, our water district costs a hundred and thirty dollars an acre, but it really costs us two hundred and sixty because we give two acre-feet for every acre foot we receive from the Metropolitan Water District. So, all of you are bearing that cost if, you know, if we all agree that we're, our, our water supply is now finite, and, you know, if to support new development, we have to import water, so that's a cost all of you have to bear. Does that make sense? Is there any problem with that legally?
Can it be incorporated in?
I think that all of those new recitals are appropriate, and also the recital regarding Prop 18, but really, this is about water conservation, not the cost of providing that water. So, of all of them, that's, that's the one that I think it would be surplusage, at least as it's been explained.
If I can argue the point on that one, what I'm trying to say here is that what we, we want to do is have new building, the net, no net new water concept, and that's part of it because if you're using new water, you're imposing costs on all the users. So, that's part of the reason why it's important for the no net new water concept.
But that's not why we're doing the resolution.
Okay, well, let's cross that off.
I think that, I think we can, I think that's an excellent concept and will help guide the larger comprehensive planning that is going to come back to you for consideration as, as quickly as possible, possibly as soon as the next meeting or two.
Yeah, okay, and I realize that that could be premature because we haven't come up with a plan yet.
Right.
So, okay.
But the two other recitals can be included in?
There's three.
I have one, two, three, four others.
Oh. They're okay.
And these could fit all?
Yes.
So, I would just, I would just suggest that we put those in before we make a motion?
No objection.
Okay.
Councilman Delmar, do you want to make the?
Can I make the motion for all three, or do we need to do individual?
Individual.
Okay. So, let's start with the building moratorium, which is, I would like to move to adopt our section, code section six, five, eight, five, eight, is that correct? Which is ordinance number one, three, five, seven U, which is our building moratorium.
Second.
All those in favor?
Wait, wait, wait. Well, again, just to be perfectly clear, as amended?
As amended.
As amended.
That's fine.
Mr. Picky over here.
I'm in favor also.
That's unanimous.
Someone else may make a motion?
Absolutely. Would someone else like to make a motion on the resolution 1458?
Let's have all three new ones make the motions here.
I'll move to approve ordinance one, three, five, six U, which is the water code three, seven, six.
Do I have a second?
As amended.
Is that amended, too? Oh, I thought it was just one.
They're all three.
Oh, no, he's put them on all of them.
Got it.
Capoeche attached.
Okay.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And that is unanimous. Mr. Goss?
What is the last one?
Thirteen fifty-seven. Or no, it's resolution fourteen fifty-eight.
Fourteen, I thought so, it's the beginning, right?
The would result in two parcels measuring fourteen thousand four hundred nine square feet and fourteen four hundred ten square feet, pretty much in the middle. At the May first, 2014 meeting, this planning commission recommended approval of parcel map thirteen oh four to the city council. The, the existing lot is improved with a one-story, two thousand eight hundred eighty-eight square-foot single-family residence and a one hundred four square-foot storage shed. The lot split would divide the property into two parcels, as I've mentioned. The parcels created in this zone must be a minimum lot size of eleven thousand square In terms of meeting the findings, given the adoption of the three moratorium, the water, the water Phase Three and the two moratorium, staff has prepared a resolution that is, this evening, for your consideration, and staff finds that two conditions cannot be met. One is the proposed tentative parcel map is not consistent with the general plan in that general plan policy C thirty-one point three requires that new development be contingent upon the ability to be served by adequate infrastructure, including water. And number two, that the design of the subdivision or the type of improvements is likely to cause serious public health problems. One of the two lots proposed would require a new water service connection, which would exacerbate the water shortage conditions faced by the city, thus rendering the proposed subdivision a threat to the public health, safety, and welfare of the city. When the planning commission reviewed this project, this, this was, occurred, it was in May, and this was prior to this enactment of an ordinance or these ordinances, which takes effect immediately. That is staff's recommendation for consideration of this resolution for denial. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Thank you, Director Cash. Before we get to any questions, is the applicant here? Would you mind coming up to the podium? Thank you. And in light of what the council just did in the previous agenda item, you do have the option on taking this off of our, of our consideration. In other words, if you, in light of what was just passed, the building and the water moratoriums and the Phase Three conservation for the no water hookups, you do have the option before we do formally vote on this to remove this from, from the agenda so that we don't have a decision tonight. Now, is that something you'd like to think about and consider, or?
Can you give me one minute?
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Let me talk to my architect.
Yep. So, if there is no future request?
I mean, then, no, that's not really part of doing business.
Can I get this approved? Because I'm not the, I'm not the builder, I'm not the developer.
Right. Well, let me get that first question, some consideration on the, on the refund.
Ultimately, it would be, the city council could. If, if the project is voluntarily withdrawn, the council could direct us, could direct that the fees be refunded.
Okay.
That, that's an option. The council could do that, they're your fees.
May I also say something?
Sure.
Okay, today I spoke to Letitia. She mentioned she wasn't going to be here, that her director was, and which, I've never met him, but anyways, she didn't tell me that she wasn't, that the staff wasn't supporting this subdivision. She told me actually the staff was recommending an approval. And also, our project should have been brought up back in the June twenty-fourth hearing, which the moratorium was brought up. The, the reason why it was delayed to this hearing is because Letitia forgot to advertise, or I, I forget what she said, to put advertisement in a newspaper or some sort. I have no clue what happened, but again, I'm getting wrong, different information. Letitia did not tell me that the staff was not going to recommend approval, and all of a sudden, hearing something different.
Yeah.
And then now, the fees, all the fees that we've paid, and, and just so you know, Tommy, he's not a developer. He purchased the land, the lot was too, it's too big, he doesn't know what he wants to do with it, but we qualified for the subdivision, and that's what we did, but he's not a developer. That's not what he does.
I understand that.
Right.
And just, you know, we appreciate your comments, and we, we're either going to consider it, if you want us to consider it, we can consider all these things and then we will vote on it. But my point, you know, before we get into all these specifics of why it's on this, you know, agenda, not the previous one, and what has happened, would you, you know, we can consider it, but again, then we'd have to go into the actual project and whether it, it can be passed in light of what just happened. So, again, all we need right now is a decision whether you want us to go forward or-
I understand, but what about the fees? You said it's a possibility, but if we don't-
We can, we can consider that, you know, if that's what you, I mean, you just asked a question about, you know, things, why it's on this agenda. We really can't, we really can't talk about that unless we really consider the project itself. We can consider the fees, but what I'm saying is, you know, I can't really get into why you're being-
So, you, that's what the council is giving you, this opportunity to take that into consideration and voluntarily withdraw and preserve that application for a new day when the water moratorium gets lifted, because it is temporary, it will not be there forever.
Right, no, I understand. Okay. So, I guess, withdraw.
Yeah, withdraw.
Okay. All right, so, and now what they're asking for is whether they can actually, not even the way, they're asking for a refund of their fees now, so.
You have the, you have the authority to do that under the circumstances. These are very unusual circumstances.
Okay. Yeah, well, thank you, you know, we'll, we'll have public comment and we'll consider, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions before we open this up for public comment?
Yes. How much are the fees?
I don't have the figure in front of me, but it's about seven or eight thousand dollars.
Yeah.
It, it's a cost recovery, basically.
It, it's a cost recovery, basically.
You know, I guess my only question is, how many projects fit into, um, Director Castro or Madam City Manager, how many projects would fit into this unique situation to where we might be refunding, refunding fees and not just waiving them for future?
We have, um, one other project that is at a different stage. It's, uh, we'll be going to the planning commission in, next Thursday for, for the proposed subdivision. That would be the same fee that, that this applicant prepared. However, they're at a stage where they've already received planning commission approval.
Right.
So...
Okay. Thank you.
Possibly one other.
Yeah.
Okay, so to clarify, these folks have already gone to planning commission. They got the approval from the planning commission, but because we put in the, the moratoriums tonight, they can no longer go forward with their plan until the moratorium is lifted. The other, the other project you're talking about has not gone to the planning commission yet, correct? Okay.
Yes. But, but paid fees.
Right.
Okay.
They've paid fees as well. Okay. Well, to the extent there's any public comment on this, uh, feel free, please.
Good evening. My name is Elsa Saldana. I'm at four seventy-five Gatewood Lane. It's a pleasure to be here. I did have a comment sent via the city, uh, planning, uh, city, someone in the city I talked to who I got the yellow card from, and they, I sent her an email and... That you buy and then you just tear down because, I don't know, I just, I was just personally concerned about it, and I wanted to express that to the city council. And I truly admire the work you do, and I do want to thank you very much for listening to the citizens of this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Saldana. And I, before we have another, sorry, I want to be very clear. The public comments only as to really the, the fee, uh, the fee waiver, the... No, 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 that, and that was very, very hel, thank you very much. Appreciate the comments. I just, for future public comments, I want to make sure that everyone knows we're just taking public comment on whether we should refund the fees. No, no, no. They withdrew considerations.
I'm Cynthia Gitte. I am the owner of the, uh, former Hoover Estate at five hundred North Michilanda Avenue, and I submitted several objections to this project, which directly, uh, impact my property in a number of ways. So, um, I would just say that I don't, I would hope that this would not have been approved in any event, even without the complications of tonight. Water is a big issue, uh, in many different respects, but there are a lot of other problems with this project as it affects my property directly, as well as the whole neighborhood.
Thank you.
What is Cynthia's last name?
G.I.T.T.
G.I.T.T. Barbara Lee.
Short and sweet. Precarious situation. I'd get the checkbook out and write as fast as you can, refund the owners of this number three public hearing into parcel map. And I say number three because it follows what we just had here, number two. So before the ink can dry, I would write that refund check and hand it to the owner of the property ASAP.
Thank you, Barbara.
Caroline Brown, Alta Vista Drive. Some years ago, I filed an appeal, which was slightly different than what you're facing tonight, and had to pay for that appeal. And when I came to the planning commission meeting, the property developer of that project, uh, which I was appealing, was changing it right in front of me in a way to sort of meet my interests to, and so the planning commission asked me would I withdraw my appeal, and I said yes, and they refunded my money. So there's, there's those considerations always.
Great.
Thank you.
So precedent is...
Yeah, there is precedent, exactly. I like to hear that.
That concludes my staff presentation. I'd be glad to answer any of the questions. I don't know if any of the applicants are still...
And I was just about to ask.
They are, they're still here.
Well, it seems like we have some applicants, and to the extent you guys would like to come down to the podium and, and give us a brief background about yourself, and we may have a few questions, please feel free. And I, I'll call just in order here. Shannon King here? Okay.
Great, so good evening. Uh, my name is Shannon King, and I've submitted an application for the library board of trustees. I am a resident of Sierra Madre, and I have to say, I think one of the most outstanding attributes of our community is the library. I support the library currently as a volunteer each week. On Saturday morning, I serve as a morning opening assistant to help prepare the library for the day, and I have to say, this is a huge highlight of my week. I feel very thrilled to be there and to be among the staff and patrons. Last fall, I also participated on the strategic, uh, planning committee to look at the top strategic goals and the services for the library and to help provide input. So that was a great learning experience for me, and I enjoyed the opportunity to participate. And I'm also a member of the Friends of the Library. My, um, professional background is in communications, public relations, corporate communications, media relations, and on and on. I, um, currently serve as a communications manager, supporting the human resources function and direct support for the executive leader, our chief people officer for Nestle USA in Glendale. So I'm managing communications programs and doing a lot of writing for more than twenty-five thousand employees across the country. My, um, interest in supporting the library is a personal passion. I, I love libraries, and I think it's very important for our community, having an engaged, active community, and, um, I, I know there's many challenges facing libraries right now, whether it's the funding or how do we survive in this digital age? But I think there are communications opportunities for us to continue to reach the public and promote those services, and I would love the opportunity to continue to volunteer and support the group. With that said, though, I do understand this process, and I know there's many other great applicants here this evening. So if not chosen, I still will have all my full support for the library and will be there every Saturday. So, thank you.
Thanks so much. Any questions for Ms. King, or no?
I, um, I, well, I spoke to, I spoke to all the candidates, and I told them I wasn't going to... Gratitude, uh, to the city of Sierra Madre, the generosity of the, uh, people in the community who created this wonderful library. I have benefited personally from this. Uh, my daughter, eighteen years old, currently the star of the Mayfield Creative Writing Academy, just got back from Kenyon College, where she was part of a two-week creative intensive program. And I can draw a direct line from her ability to, uh, read and write and, uh, at this stratospheric level. Uh, from the fact that when she was three years old, we took her to the Sierra Madre Library, and the, the kind and benevolent librarians put books in her hand, the exact books that she needed. She was part of all the summer reading programs. And I would absolutely, it would, I would love it if families who moved to Sierra Madre had the same kind of benefit that my family has had. And I want to see, if possible, if we can keep the library at the present level or take it to the next level. Phil, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Proctor.
Follow-up question real quick?
Sure.
Mr. Proctor, can you tell us just a little bit about this experience you had at the Abraham Lincoln Presidential Library and Museum?
Right, well, I, I have this oddball career where I'm a writer for a company called BRC Imagination Arts. I was the, uh, the sort of the head writer, uh, and creative force behind the Abraham Lincoln Presidential, uh, Library in Springfield, Illinois. The greatest experience of my life, six years of utter bliss being immersed in this project. Uh, the, uh, we, we were told, the, the feasibility people told us we're going to get two hundred and fifty thousand people a year. We got six hundred thousand people the first year. The best thing about this, the most wonderful thing about this, is there was an urban legend in my family that somehow, uh, one of the people in our family was connected to Abraham Lincoln. And my mother told me this, nobody believed it. I got to talk to the historian for the state of Illinois, he was in charge of this project, and she told me that Addison G. Proctor was my great-great-grandfather, was the youngest member of the Wigwam Convention, who nominated Abraham Lincoln in eighteen sixty, and my mother was the happiest person on the face of the earth. So the fact I was connected to it is even more wonderful. So anyway, yeah. The, the, the Academy Awards of the, uh, themed entertainment business are called the Thea Awards, and that project won the Thea Award, and I won the, well, Thea Award, so that's, whatever that's worth. So, anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Proctor.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, uh, being here tonight. So, the process now is, I would just ask for, um, everyone's top two, top two picks. Absolutely, go ahead.
Can I just suggest, one of the positions is to back Phil, Councilmember Goss. So, uh, the, the fine point about this is that person will spend more ti, could, could possibly spend more time, so I just suggest we deal with them separately.
We can.
But we, you know...
You know, I, I didn't even think about that.
Yeah.
But, um, is there any, is there any, uh...
Well, what I mean is that because a, a person is allowed to finish that unexpired term, and then their first term starts after that, so, you know, small point.
We would need to know which one was doing the unexpired term.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
And which was the new.
Well, um, okay, yeah, well, considering that, then I guess the, the longer term, we'll have to, we'll have to say, which is Councilmember Goss's old seat, would probably be your top choice, then. I mean, that's how I would view it. So we'll go, we'll go, we'll go through everyone's top choice first to see if, if there's a consensus, if there's three or more votes, uh, for, for an individual, so, thank you for that. It's a good point. Whoever would like to start? Yeah, no, Councilmember Delmar did start. She did.
He just tends to like his right. Just keeps going there.
I know.
Um, so I did have a chance to either correspond or speak to some of the candidates, and my top choice would be, uh, Joy Painter, and secondly, Shannon King.
Sure.
But I really liked the Abraham Lincoln story.
Councilmember Goss?
Oh, we're just doing first choice right now?
Yeah, just do first choice for now, but I've noted the second choice, yeah.
You know, having just served on the library board, uh, all I can tell you is that everybody that applied is just top-flight. They all bring different, uh, value to that board, and this, so this is tough. But their apples and oranges strength, different strengths in all the candidates. Uh, for me, it's a close call, but I think Richard Proctor is my top candidate.
Sure.
Same here, all good candidates. Richard Proctor is mine, also.
And Councilmember Delmar?
I think I was impressed with all of them, but, um, I think my top would have been Shannon King.
Okay, and that goes to me. My top choice was Richard Proctor as well. So, that is three for Richard Proctor. Congratulations. You will, you get to fill some big shoes on the, uh, on the library board. So now we can go to the second seat, and, um, we already have one of the votes from, I think, both, both Councilmember Delmar and Erzmeni have voted for Ms. King. And Councilmember Goss?
For me, this is a tough call, because, um, I happen to know one of the candidates here, and she's a delightful person, Joy Painter. And that, her library background is awesome, I think it would be fantastic. But Shannon King does have a considerable amount of, of volunteer experience here, particularly with the Sierra Madre, uh, Library, and, uh, having worked on the strategic plan that I just participated in, that's a very impressive experience. So I think by just a nose, I would go with Shannon King.
Okay.
I concur with Shannon King also, and again, the differentiator for me is that her public relations background and the fact that she has served on the board and participated in, uh, a strategic plan as well. But, uh, um, yeah, Ms. Painter is also a good candidate, and so is Patricia Patano, although she doesn't live here. But anyway, Shannon King would be mine.
And Shannon King was my vote as well. Um, Joy, thank you so much for, for coming and, um, you know, sticking through that meeting and, and giving us the background about yourself. Really appreciate it. And I've said this before, I applied to the library board trustees twice and never got on. So keep applying, or if you get...
Run for council.
Or run for council. But no, thank you very much. Uh, to Ms. Ms. King, congratulations, and to Mr. Proctor, congratulations. So, thank you very much. Um, we are now at ten to ten. We usually don't go past ten, and I think our budget discussion is going to be at least, I mean, an hour. Yeah, that's right, if we just adopted. But, uh, Madam City Manager, is there any reason why we couldn't, um, considering the time, push this to the next meeting? Yeah, do we have any public hearings on the next agenda?
Uh, let me take a quick, I did bring the schedule with me. July, we will be bringing back the building moratorium, extending it. The council will make the decision on one year or two years. That is your only public hearing item at the next meeting. So it's, it's doable.
Okay. I, I just think that pressing past ten is never that productive, and I think we're going to need more time than, than forty minutes. So, um, you know, my, my recommendation would be to, to push it, if that's okay. Okay.
Concur.
Any, uh, new items for consideration, future, future council meetings?
I know, I, I think, I don't remember who I was speaking to about, but I just want to bring out a discussion about, um, the general plan and, and to a timeline as to what we're looking at for getting that approved through a planning and also getting it to city council.
And I just have a follow-up on our city, city hall hours. When are we going to be discussing that?
That was scheduled, it's on your, it's on the council's approved strategic plan as part of the customer service enhancements, and I'm trying to think, I think that was scheduled for...
Is that the one in September?
September, one of the September meetings. And I believe there was an item mentioned, um, this evening. Uh, let me take a quick peek, that someone said they wanted to agendize, but I can't find it. Okay.
Okay. Well, we can always, yeah, we can always bring it up to the next meeting. Anything else? If not, a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.